I call a meeting to order. In accordance with the open meeting law, the Board of Selectment states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by Northham and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome my guests this evening and those watching on cable. First order of business is a presentation by the town clerk. Early voting, Barbara.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for sharing your time with me today. This is really just to go over some of the, to discuss the issue of early voting, which is the buzz around town, at least for our office right now. As you may recall, the state passed Chapter 111 of the Acts of 2014, which will implement early voting beginning with this November election, and then it continues for every state election every November. So every other year when there's a state election, whether it's the governor's race or the presidential ballot, early voting will take place. It does not affect local elections, it does not affect special elections, and it does not affect primaries. So it is specifically geared, at this point, to November general elections. This was brought about for a number of reasons, but I will just say that it does present a greater opportunity for voters to take advantage of advanced voting, other than absentee voting. Absentee voting versus early voting. Absentee voting needs three reasons in order to do absentee voting under the law. You must be absent from the city, town, or state during Election Day, during all of the hours of Election Day. You must either have a physical disability or a religious belief that also prevents you from voting on that election day. Early voting is really no excuse absentee voting. You don't have to have a reason under the law in order to take advantage of early voting. So that gives more people an opportunity to make part in this process. You may have been aware and you may hear, some states have early voting in place already. There are many states, I believe the number is about 30 or so. So it is not new throughout the country, it's just something new here in Massachusetts. And every state implements their laws in a different way. So we've already heard in the news that there are some states that have already started early voting, and that's set by their own statutes. Here in Massachusetts, statewide, the law was written to have an early voting period beginning, technically it begins 11 days before the state election, so it starts on Monday, October 24th, and it runs through the Friday prior to the election, so it runs through November 4th, Friday, November 4th. The law was written to allow a lot of flexibility to the Secretary of State in implementing regulations that will control the early voting. And he did issue regulations fairly recently on that. But as I said, the date, times, and location are under statute, so some of them do overlap or will overlap with absentee voting when that takes place. Absentee voting will start as soon as we get absentee ballots in. There's no set timeframe. Once we get the ballots in, review them, check them over, we're ready to go, because we have people who have requested absentee ballots from day one this year. They can do that up to, as far ahead as January, and request ballots for all elections during the course of a calendar year. So there will be an overlap period once early voting starts, and that's something that, you know, we would probably just almost encourage people to do early voting if they come into the office during that crossover period, rather than absentee voting. I think it will be a cleaner, more streamlined process for the voter. The location for early voting defaults to the city or town hall, unless it is deemed to be unsuitable for some reason. It is determined by the local election official, so that is the town clerk in this case, and we have determined that we will hold early voting here. It is a convenient location. People are aware, when they come here, they do absentee voting here, so it's a natural choice. Any other alternative location would have to be centrally located, handicap accessible, and another public building. So for this time, you know, we are going with the town hall. We are gearing in on doing it in Room 5, which is the office next to the town clerk's office, and that will provide a greater opportunity for the people that are manning the early voting to have us, the office staff, myself and my office staff, available for assistance during this process. Obviously, the office staff can't do early voting while it's also doing absentee voting, doing public records requests, vital records requests, and all the other normal functions of our office, which don't stop through voting period. So we are having election workers, we will be having election workers man that position, but we will be available to assist them for any questions that arise. This is a new process for Northham, as it is for every city and town in the Commonwealth, so we're going to make our best effort to make a smooth process, to have it workable for everybody, but we know that it will be a work in progress, too. So we will be open to reviewing it on a day-to-day basis as we go through the process, to make sure what works is efficient and helps the voter along in the process. And we can certainly tweak it as we go along, even day-to-day. It is, the things that are mandated are the dates, the times, and the location, and we have set that. Notification has to be given on those, so we do have that in place. The minimum number of hours required are the normal hours for the town hall. So for us, it'll be Monday through Thursdays from 8 until 4, and the Fridays from 8 until 1. The town, or any city or town, has the opportunity to provide for additional times at the discretion of the local election official. So we all know the challenges of this building and parking here at the town hall, and it will be, we're anticipating a busy process for early voting, and parking is one of the inhibitors here at this building. So we have opted to offer additional hours outside of the normal working hours for the benefit of the voters. And that will be Tuesday evenings of the two weeks. We will stay open from 4 to 7. And there is one opportunity for weekend voting, and that would be the weekend of October 29th, which is a Saturday, and people do have the option to hold early voting on Sunday also. But we are opting to be open Saturday, October 29th, from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. I feel that this will give a better opportunity for the public to take part in this process, because there will definitely be more parking available. You know, I don't anticipate those times will have any committee meetings going on. It'll be before any evening committee meetings. The Saturday would be free and clear. And that's our whole purpose. We want to make it accessible to the public, we want to be sure that they are able to take advantage of this process, and I feel that those dates and times will give them some better opportunity. So that is our plan for that part of it. I will also offer to you that the Secretary of State's office has put in place an incentive payment of $1,000 for a community our size, with the number of registered voters we have, for being open on that Saturday for a minimum of four hours. So we will be able to take advantage of that also, and that will help defray some of the costs for those times. Does anyone, yes, go ahead.
I have a few questions.
Okay.
Sounds like another state unfunded mandate.
Yes, it certainly does.
With the exception of the $1,000, right?
Yes, yes.
Just so I understand, Room 5, it's got the big tables in there.
Yes.
So those are going to have to be removed?
No, we're going to work with that. We're going to work with whatever, let me, varies this a little differently.
Let me give you the rest of the questions, then, because I think they're all related. So is it going to be set up kind of like what you would do down at the church? There's going to be booths that people can go to? And are you going to use a voting machine, or is it going to be more like the paper on a, you know, absentee ballot that you would, you know, the current practice associated with?
It's half and half.
It's half and half.
What we will do as far as setting up is really going to depend on what Room 5 looks like, because I know it's going to be under renovations. But we can accommodate anything. If the tables that are presently there, which are quite large and take up the majority of the floor space, continue to be there, we will utilize those tables for absentee voting. And we have corrugated plastic booths to offer privacy. We can roll in one of our four compartment booths for use for people to stand and vote, just as they do at the polls. We can make it work with whatever we're presented with as we get closer to that date. So the actual setup, right now, I can't specify what it will be as far as the physical layout, because it will all depend on renovations that are going on at Town Hall at that time. As far as the process, the process is a little different than it is at the Election Day. You still would need, the voter would still be checking in, but the process is not by precinct now. We can have an alphabetical list, okay, so that will streamline the process. We're not required to have four precincts set up as we would at the polls. So we would have one check-in area by alphabet, by name, so that everybody goes to the same check-in process. The process of filtering these ballots into precincts will be part of the office procedures after they voted. A person who gets an early voting ballot will receive, once they check in, they will receive their ballot plus an envelope where the ballot will be sealed. It would, similar to an absentee ballot. So the person will be sealing that ballot, signing an affidavit on the front of that envelope, and the ballots will be stored in the vault at Town Hall until Election Day or evening. None of the ballots are run through a tabulator as they are on Election Day. So in this venue, they're more like an absentee ballot, because all absentee ballots are also stored in an envelope sealed by the voter, and an affidavit is signed on the envelope, and those are sealed in our vault until Election Day. So nothing is tabulated, nothing is permitted to be tabulated prior to Election Day. So we're not running tabulation tapes every day. So the entire counting process for the election does occur on Election Day. The only equipment that will be there will be the AutoMark handicap marking device, and that machine is strictly that. It is a marking device. It allows a disabled person to utilize the machine to mark their ballot in any fashion that they wish. It pops up the image of the ballot, and it's a touchscreen, and then it just marks the ballot, but then the ballot, again, is enclosed in an envelope, signed by the voter, sealed in the vault until Election evening.
So the absentee ballots?
Absentee or early voting.
Well, in the end, the paper that either one is, those are manually counted at the end?
No, they run through the machine.
They can run through the?
They run through the machines.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yes, yeah.
Jeffrey?
Make sure I have a clear understanding of this. It's my, my visual on this is that they're going to go to Room 5, they're going to accept the ballot, and they're going to go into Room 5, and they're going to cast their vote through the machine, I presume. I presume there will be a machine in the room?
No, as I said, there's no tabulator during this process. They're going to mark their ballot, just as though they went to the polls, and they're standing in the booth and just filling in the circles.
Okay.
And it's, have you ever done absentee voting?
Myself, no, but...
Okay, well, it's the same process, just as voters come in right now to our counter to absentee vote, they fill in their ballot, they seal it in the envelope that we provide for them.
Okay.
And then we take those, and we obviously update the computer system to record that they have voted that day, you know, but the vote itself is unknown, it's not cast.
Right, but, so when, so this will be in your possession?
Yes.
All right, not in the machine?
Correct, there is no machine.
They would do that, they would do that the day, on Election Day?
We will do that.
Yes, that's what I meant, yeah, I'm sorry. You will do that?
On Election Day.
On Election Day, okay.
Correct. The one difference, too, between absentee voting in person and early voting in person is that an absentee voter has to fill out a request for a ballot?
Right, right.
Where an early voter is just walking in as though they were at the polls and giving their name to the checker and receiving their ballot and an affidavit envelope.
Well, let me, let me take an opportunity here. First of all, there is no doubt that the manner in which you do your work will be as secure and as safe for every voter that comes into this, into Town Hall to vote, and of course, whoever, when they go to the St. Teresa's to vote, okay? So your job is remarkable, perfectly done. I, this whole process about early voting, I take this opportunity to share my opinion on that. As a kid, I was always taught that on Election Day, the whole country comes together, and they vote, and they decide who they're going to, to pick for whatever office is being run. And there were always exceptions to the rule, you can't be there, so you get an absentee ballot, you're in the military, whatever the case, handicap, and so on, so there's always exceptions to the rule. But to me, voting is the only thing that we can do as a country, together, on one day, and celebrate our most cherished, what's what I'm looking for, it's a privilege, thank you, a most cherished privilege to come and vote on that one day and decide, and you have up until that day to make your decision. And I really believe that today, that the early voting has convoluted that. As great of a job as I know that you will do, I think that it has a negative impact on our country overall. But it's good to know that you'll do a good job.
We will do our best.
Yeah, you do, okay. But, so I think that, again, you do a good job, it's what it is today, but I think that, I'd like to see our country get back to voting together as one people. I miss that.
Well, as we all know, you know, we work under the laws that were given, and we do the best job that we can in following them all. So I appreciate your comments, but this has been set before us, we're up to the challenge, and we will do it as best as we can, for sure.
Mr. O'Leary?
So how many additional hours are you planning on, one employee, one additional election worker during the day? How many, how many additional hours are you anticipating having to budget for?
I have budgeted for this in my current budget. I did put in money for this with, and that was before we knew exactly what was going to be required, the regulations weren't in place, but, you know, in planning ahead, I was just trying to prepare for it. I don't know if I will go over that amount, in which case I may see the FinCom for a transfer from the reserve fund. You heard it here, Abby. But as I said, this process may be tweaked from day to day. Part of that tweaking could be the number of election workers manning the early voting time period. It obviously, to me, will be different for the times that the Town Hall is open, just due to the limitation of parking, versus when we open, or stay open those Tuesday evenings, and on Saturday, when there won't be any parking issues here. I expect to have more voters show up, I expect to have more early voting staff here. At any given time, obviously, myself and my office staff are here during the open hours. During the extra polling hours, I want to be sure that at least one of our staff will be here. I will be here for everything, but I want an additional person from my office here, because we're the ones that work with elections day in and day out. And questions that arise, you know, the election workers do a phenomenal job, they're, the laws are intricate, the laws change, and they want to do a good job, so they call on us as a resource. So we will be here to help them with that. Police details are not required under this law, but they are at the discretion of the local election official. That being said, I don't intend to have any police details during the normal working hours of the Town Hall, but I fully intend to have a police detail during the extra hours. The building will be open to the public, the ballots will be here, and in the open, obviously, and we want to just make sure that the security of the ballots, the security of the people working and the voters is taken to account. So during those extra polling hours, there will be a police detail here up until the time that the ballots get locked in the vault.
Mr. Chairman, just, I want to respectfully disagree a little bit here with my colleague in relation to opening up the process and expanding it over a longer period of time. To me, the more people that participate, the better. Again, not everybody has working conditions that are conducive to being able to vote. People travel, again, there's absentee, this is a little bit, a little bit easier than absentee ballot, you can still come in and vote over the counter absentee-wise.
Yes, they can.
But again, I think this just sends a little different message, where you just come in, cash your ballot, put it in the envelope, move on. Again, not that different from absentee ballot, but, you know, the idea is certainly different, and the images is different. So, which, so as I'm looking at the calendar, you're talking two weeks prior to, if you just did the Monday through Thursday, additional hours, you know, not necessarily the Friday, I don't know how many people are going to come in on a Friday afternoon or evening to vote, or additional Saturday. You know, you're talking additional 24 hours of being open if you're going to do it Monday through Thursday until 8 o'clock.
We're only going to be open until Tuesday.
I know what you told, I know what you said, I know what your plan is. I'm anticipating that at some point, this is going to take off, and more people are going to take advantage of it, because Election Day itself, particularly in a presidential year, lends itself to long waiting lines, and if people are heading on their way home and know that they can come out, come in and vote on their way home from work the two weeks prior, it just makes it easier for everybody to participate.
So what is it that you're suggesting, Mr. O'Leary?
Expanding the hours.
Oh, well...
For more days. Expanding the hours for more days. Again, we're talking about, if you just did Monday through Thursday until 8 o'clock, that's an additional 24 hours. If you want to add the extra Saturday, because there's two Saturdays, that's, that's 28 hours. And that's why, my question was, you know, how many personnel were you anticipating hiring, and you talked about police details. Now, what, for the additional cost of allowing people that flexibility to come in here, avoid the long lines on Election Day themselves, and again, forget the absentee ballot portion of it, just come in and vote over the counter, rather than absentee, I mean, it's certainly synonymous.
Well, one thing that, the outline that I've given you is what the public will see. The other part of it is the processing in the office of all of these ballots, or the people that voted, into the computer system, which has to be done every night in order to refresh the new list the next day. So we're working beyond our normal work, because we have to complete that process.
No, 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 I understand that.
So there is a time where you, you have to just limit what you do. This is a first for Massachusetts, it's a first for all of us. I believe that the process that we will have in place for this election will probably differ from what we do two years down the road. We're going to learn from this one.
Which I guess is, to my point, is that this is going to be one of the busiest times, generally is, presidential election, as opposed to off-years or, you know, even gubernatorial years. Presidential election is the, is the one that generates the most interest. So to me, it's, I think if we can provide as much access, and again, the additional cost, you know, I don't know what total dollar amount you're budgeted for, but we're talking additional 24 hours, and again, maybe it's one or two people, maybe it's an additional, you know, half a dozen details, to provide people adequate access under the law, beyond what's minimally called for, in order to basically provide people the opportunity and encourage them to come and vote. Because some people, as a result of the different candidates that are here, I set a whole hum on some of them, some people are talking about not voting. Maybe this will get more people to come in and encourage them to vote, that is what their persuasion is. But encourage them to vote, because the lies won't be as extensive if they come in on a Wednesday evening or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday evening. That's the point that I'm trying to make, is, I know this is the trial, I know this is the beginning of the whole process for, you know, statewide, the election process, but this is the one that's really going to set the tone. Again, you can throttle it back at the ones that have less interest, but this is the one that's going to have the most, generate the most amount of interest. So why wouldn't we, you know, go in it, go in at it, see what it generates, and then throttle it back based upon the participation level? Because if it generates a significant amount of interest now, then you're going to see, really get a bellwether as to how's it, how's it going to work going forward? And then you can throttle it back at other elections, which don't generate as much interest. So to me, it's, don't go with the minimum, I know we're going a little bit above and beyond with the Saturday, but, you know, don't go with the minimum. Let's, let's open it up, test it, truly test it, and see what the interest is coming out of the gate. And I think the interest is going to grow as time goes on for the process, and I think it's going to encourage more and more people to participate. So to me, I think we should expand it a little bit more than what you're talking about. And I'm, don't take this as being critical, you know, I understand what you're thinking about, your thinking processes, but your thought processes, but I really think this is the test. If you really want to see what the interest is going to be coming out of the gate, this is the test, this is the election, this is the one that's going to do it, and that's going to give us the benchmark to work from going forward. So I think, you know, if we can, if you can think about it a little bit more, and expand some of the days a little bit longer, rather than just, you know, one Tuesday and one Saturday, beyond 4 o'clock in the afternoon, because a lot of people can't get here. You know, a lot of people who work until 5, 6 o'clock at night have a hard time racing in to get to Election Day, particularly on presidential.
Right, and the opportunity for absentee voting is always there for those people, as it always has been.
I know, but I think the education process, as far as the open voting, is key, because it's with us now, it's out of law. And I think this is the election to test it, and provide the opportunities, and educate people, and encourage people to participate, and this is going to be, set the benchmark for the maximum amount of participation level you're going to get initially. And again, I think it's going to grow in the future. So, you know, I would encourage you to take a look at, look at it, and, you know, the finance companies got lots of money in the reserve fund to cover this sort of unforeseen expenses, you know, based upon the timing of the law. But I think, I think the hours should be expanded beyond 4 o'clock in the afternoon, other than one day on a Saturday, particularly in this instance of the presidential election for the first go-around.
Did you want to say something, Kathy? Before I say something?
Sure. I, I think I shut the phone.
I think...
Is it on?
Hello?
Yes, Kate wants to say something. She wants to see if the microphone was on, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think this is on, but that's okay. Do you have some flexibility to sort of expand the hours? I, I agree with Mr. O'Leary. Do you have flexibility to expand?
At this point, I pretty well notify the state of the hours that I'm doing. This is at the discretion of the local election official. I have to take into account all of the other work that we have to do during this time period. So this is not a small task, just to manage what we will be doing here. As I said, there is a lot of still computer work behind the scenes that these, each individual voter still gets entered into the computer, and then their record is updated, and it has to be maintained on a daily basis for early voting, so that you want to prevent somebody from coming back and early voting again. So there are a lot of aspects to consider. I want to be sure that it is done well, that it is done properly, that we follow all the rules. We are giving extra opportunity, which I will say that not every community is doing. I recognize that we're not open any evenings a week, and... a week, and that is why I took the opportunity to be open during the week too, to give people who commute that opportunity, and that's why we decided on a Saturday as well, because people would be perhaps more available on a Saturday. But the opportunity for absentee voting is still there. So I believe that we can still get the people who want to vote, have an opportunity to vote in some manner. Some will still come to the polls. This process or the two processes between absentee voting and early voting will alleviate some of the foot traffic at the polls. But I think that along Mr. Yule's line, I think a lot of people enjoy Election Day and the excitement of the polls and going there. As far as the traffic, we really only encountered long lines in the traffic getting to the polls. The last presidential election, once people arrived at the polls and the polls opened, it was a steady stream, and there's no problems with the voting process. You know, people may have to wait a couple of minutes for a free booth, but most people are marking their ballot, they know what they're doing, and that process flows. It, you know, I do have to think of all aspects of this because it will be, we want to be sure that we do do it properly, as I said, and myself and the office staff are going to be spearheading this. The election workers will be supporting it. And we do have a lot of other responsibilities as well as the fact that we want to make sure we maintain this process properly. So I gave it a lot of thought, and the state is pleased with the opportunity for communities to be open just even one day during the week. They're very pleased for communities to be open on a Saturday. So I don't think you would find any argument from the Secretary of State's office when we are going beyond what our normal requirements are. And we definitely want to do that, to give some opportunity. As I said, it's a work in progress, and you know, what we do do this year may change in two years, and then two years after that. It is an unknown, and we're approaching it with due diligence, and we want to also be sure that we can do it properly.
My other question is, are you, since a plan is in place, will you post that on this town's website?
Absolutely. It has to be posted on the website and in the town hall. There's a legal notice going in the newspaper. Those requirements are part of the statute or the regulations.
And I think in our, we have a great calendar on the website that maybe the dates and the times could be.
I handle that. I was waiting for this presentation before I put it up there.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
So that we could give the public all the information at once.
That's great.
Yeah.
Barbara, I want to commend you, being very proactive on this, maybe above and beyond what I would have proposed in terms of the number of days and so on and so forth. I have a question, though, and this just seems like extra labor.
Right.
During this process, unlike on Voting Day where people come in, they mark their ballot, they put it in the machine, and it's taken care of, right? It goes into an envelope, and then you put it in the safe, and then on Election Day, you take them out, you've got to have a crew to open all the envelopes to process them. Well, see, to me, maybe there ought to be some depository box or something that would allow people, you know, it's like the machine, but it's not doing any tabulation.
You know, the Clerks Association had some, I guess input isn't the word I want, had suggestions as to the process to make it work better for the voters, for the staff, for everyone. But this is the law. This is how the law is designed. We have no latitude in this process. This is the, the ballot must be sealed in an envelope. The voter has to sign the affidavit on the envelope. It has to be stored securely up until Election Day. There is no latitude.
So when you get through telling the man hours to do that, send the bill to the Secretary of State.
We would like to do that.
Common sense would say, come up with a better process.
Well, when we first heard of this, we did think that we would be able to have a tabulator, and the ballots would go directly into a tabulator. There were so many unknowns, and this is what we had hoped for, but the tape, we would not run the tape for the tabulator till Election Day. But that's not how it ended up. So we have to work with it, you know, and do the best we can. It does take a tremendous amount of time just to open and process absentee voters. With the volumes that we're expecting here, and of course, we may have had 1,000 absentee voters at the last presidential, between absentee and early voters, you know, the Secretary of State has stated that communities could have up to 20% of their voters, which could be about 2,000 voters for us.
So the voter count doesn't get in for two days afterward?
Well, you can't go home till it's done.
It makes no sense.
But if the lines are so big at the polls that absentee ballots that are transported from the town hall to the polling location and early voting ballots that go from the town hall to the polling location can't be processed through the check-in line, through the checkout line, open the envelopes, run them through the machines during the course of the day, then once polling stops at 8:00 p.m., because no one can come in after 8:00 p.m., we do have the allowances there for us to at least run those ballots after 8:00 p.m. In other words, voters cannot come in to vote anymore, but we would then be dedicated to running these ballots through the tabulator after the polling hours close.
Right, but you have to open every unsealed, every sealed envelope.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Barbara, just as far as the last presidential election, though, did you find the time during the course of the day to run the absentee ballots, or did you run them at the end?
At the end. The line is pretty steady, you know, so we did have to run them. I think there might have been a couple of precincts that weren't as busy, and they ran them through the course of the day. They may have had a lighter turnout and a lower line at the polls, you know, but I know that we ran some through, you know, some precincts through after polling hours closed.
Ms. Yule.
Just a point of clarification from this exchange. I thought I understood that all of the absentee ballots and now these ballots will be counted after eight o'clock.
Well, the tally won't be released till eight o'clock. Whether they're run through the machine during the course of the day, they will all, the results will come out on the same tape as ballots for persons who came to the polls.
I guess I'm still looking for clarification because I'm under the impression that absentee ballots and now early voting ballots would be counted after all of the other tallies for the day.
No, not necessarily. They have, they will be counted together with the ballots voted in person. They may be run through the machine at any point during the day, just as though it was the voter bringing in his ballot. It will be the election workers carrying these ballots and running them through the machines.
And someone would be supervising that process as well?
The wardens and clerks do this every election for the absentee ballots, and I'm at the polls all day long. So there is, you know.
So, now you've been doing this for a number of years, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it has become very complicated now compared to, say, the first day that you started doing this.
Well, I will say that the absentee voting process is identical to the start, for me, 35 years ago. Okay, that process has not changed. Now we've added another layer to this. The easiest solution to this would have been to basically change the laws to eliminate absentee voting and have only early voting, you know, with no excuse absentee voting during the same time periods. And that would have just, I think that the fact that we have two processes going that are just slightly different are adding to the level of confusion because we're getting this through phone calls at the office as well, that people aren't understanding completely the two different venues for voting.
Well, exceptions aside, if everybody voted on one day, it would be done in one day, it would hit no problem.
And it would be able to participate.
Eight a.m., seven a.m. to eight p.m.
Any other questions from Barbara?
No.
Thank you, Barbara, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. I think we're all going to need it. But we're up to the challenge, though. I appreciate your time.
Okay, the next two items we'll just go through quickly. Minutes for September 12, 2016, regular and executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September 12, 2016, regular session minutes as written.
Do you hear a second? Second, Ms. Yule, on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananimos? Executive session of September 12.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September 12, 2016, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Second, Ms. Yule. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananimos? Anyone here for public comment? Yes, sir. Podium name and address.
My name's Arthur Cogan. I live at 21 Wadsworth Road in North Rettig. I've been resident 10 years or so. I come today before the board. I'm trying to navigate a process which I don't know full understanding of. And I will start by saying that several years back, the town had offered a piece of property, a parcel, approximately 5,000 square feet adjacent to my property. They had offered it to some of the other, butters as well. At that time, I was not in a position to buy that property, and I have, this past spring, summer, have come to the town with a written request to reengage in that process. And I'm just trying to get some traction and understanding on what it will take for a yes or no decision, because then that will sort of like give me direction as to where I make my decisions. And my understanding was that it had, this request had to go take the property through municipal review, and I wanted to come at this forum to find out where we are in that process, if I can, and understand further if, what it will take or what the approximate timeline would be for this request. So that was one of my first requests. So you can address that.
Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, sir. And I know you were here at a previous meeting and unfortunately weren't able to address the board, so thank you for coming back.
Well, I apologize, and I hope that wasn't part of the minutes. And I do know now that with an open door, you can probably come in, the town meeting. When it's closed, it's not a good idea.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, we do have a copy of the gentleman's request relative to town-owned land that it relates to an abutting property that's owned by the town near his residence, I believe. And it's something that we would forward to the board when we provide the information related to the annual municipal land review that the board conducts. Generally, the board has conducted such a review in the earlier middle part of the summer. It was delayed this year. However, we have distributed the request for departmental comment to all of the town's departments, boards, and committees in the beginning of September or end of August, if I remember correctly. There is a timeline by board policy that we have to allow for turnaround for response, and we believe that we should have the bulk of responses back in the month of November, and anticipate forwarding both the departmental board and committee responses, as well as any related requests to purchase land, such as this, to the board for its consideration at a meeting later in the fall.
Would it be a good idea for me to be present at that time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we certainly, what we would do is for, and you're not alone in the request, we have received other requests that this board has reviewed that relate to town-owned land, and we provide, not only do we provide the board with those requests as part of the municipal review, but we notify those who are interested, such as yourself, of the date of the review. So you should expect to be notified at least seven days in advance that we'll be conducting the review. It's not necessarily a hearing, as we'll be conducting in a few moments related to town meeting. It's more of a board discussion, at least initially, but it's the beginning stage for the process for which you to request what you are requesting.
The gentleman mentioned that the board had made an offer in the past for this particular piece of land. I take it you're interested in the land to deal with a septic issue or a garage or?
It's mainly an issue to make my lot a little bit more conforming in shape. I have a very odd-shaped lot, and what it will, I'm not looking to develop the land in any way. What I'm really looking to do is cut down a few trees that have presented some problems over the last several years, clean up a yard space, and create a little bit more yard. In my request to the, my letter to the town administrator, I did ask that, I can bring it up now, that because it's such non-conforming, I own a piece of property almost equivalent size behind my next-door neighbor's house. I would actually like to divide that off as well. I mean, that can be tabled for later, but it will just basically allow me the liability of trees in that part falling on his yard, which I've had to replace two fence sections in the past X amount of years due to this. So, I mean, there's, my true intent is really to do some pruning of trees in the area, open up some more sunlight in the yard, that I don't grow moss on the side of the house and things like that. And I did in my letter say that I would be interested in maybe potentially putting a shed on it in the future, but nothing to build a home or develop any properties, clearly to create a conforming law, it says.
Okay, so the town administrator is going to notify the gentleman. Anyone else that has approached the town associated with purchase of town-owned land?
That's correct, yes.
Do you have any other questions?
And I have one other question. The last meeting that I attended for town hall was, again, several years back, and it was in regards to approving the streets in the town, and there was some provision that they be paved. I have put several requests out to the town to have my road paved as well. I ran into the issue with this past spring and summer with turnover with the Department of Public Works. And so I know I have the town engineer on my side. He said that he's, you know, has a very poor grading on the street. It's in very tough shape. And I was told by the interim DPW director that it was not in the budget for this year here, but I'm hoping to at least engage and make a public record of requesting maybe for next year, if possible, to have the road on the approved streets list to be paved.
Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, sir. And you're not the only resident who's made such a request, so, you know, rest assured that we have it on our radar. I've spoken with the acting public works director, and as this board knows, the Department of Public Works will annually make a request to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for town funds to supplement our Chapter 90 funding, which is state aid given to the town to pave roads. We generally get about $500,000 from the state per year, depending upon the year, and we try to supplement that with an additional $300,000 of town funds. We expect to have a similar request from the Department of Public Works forwarded to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for the next fiscal year, and planning for the use of those funds will begin in the later part of this year or January of 2017. We'll make sure that that area is considered. We can't make a commitment at this point to go through with paving, but we can certainly factor it in for consideration. Perhaps if there's other paving to be done in the area, it could be done in conjunction. We have seen that occur in some instances, but we'll make sure that your location is noted.
Just in relation to Wadsworth Road, though, I don't know if that's an accepted street or not.
Again, that was the meeting that I was present here last. It was accepted at the time, and.
At which time? If it's accepted, it's accepted.
Yeah. There was a meeting where a number of streets were accepted in bulk to present to the state for funding. I wasn't completely understanding.
So that's good, because roads such as Wadsworth Road sometimes are an unaccepted street.
And that was, this is a very special thing for me, because I lack insight into that matter, because there's two boundaries of Wadsworth where it crosses Linwood. I don't know if everyone's familiar. There's the north side, which was recently paved, I would say, seven years ago, and that was through a process with the neighbors. They had put in proportion of funds.
Fifty-fifty split, right.
Yes. And at that time, I had engaged, I live on the, unfortunately, I live on the other end, the lower end of Wadsworth, and I lived on the unpaid portion, which is my, beginning of my property, and my next-door neighbor, we have, both are on dirt road. And I engaged at that point in time to be part of the Wadsworth pavement, and I thought it was going to be the street. When I had engaged, they were like, yeah, it's in process. I was sort of like the left out. And that's no big deal, because I was not involved from the very beginning in that process. And I had, at the time, I talked to the DPW, Carnavale, I believe his name was at the time, and I didn't really press on it too much. time, and I didn't really press on it too much, but I'm re-engaging with it now. But at that meeting in particular, because the road had been paved on the upper side with the fifty-fifty split with the landowners, I was making note that the portion that I'm on in Wadsworth is not paved, so.
Mr. Gilbert.
Just a point of clarification. I have to caveat my comments that they would apply if the road were accepted. If we determined that the road were not accepted by the town, then it would fall into the category of a butter contribution into the, generally to the level of 50% and that process. So I just want to make it clear for any residents from Wadsworth who might be watching. I don't have the records in front of me. On the presumption here that it's being represented as being accepted, we could look at it in that way. If it were not accepted by the town, that'd be a different scenario.
I would love an answer to that, because that's something that I need to know.
Sure. And we could find that out in the town clerk's office pretty easily.
Okay, very good.
I'd be happy to look at that and follow up with you. If you could just grab your number on the way out.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to, may I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Great. You say Wadsworth, you come down Linwood going towards Green?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you on the left or the right?
I'm on the right. I go down the hill.
You go down the hill, okay.
And that portion going down on the right off of Linwood is, is in terrible shape comparable to the other side, so.
Okay.
I've sent my request with photographs and details with the town engineer. He understands, and he's, I guess you guys go through a grading of the roads, and he's got it on his failure list.
All right, so the town administrator will check into the situation, whether it's accepted or not, and then...
We'll get back to you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, it's a little late. We're going to start an informational hearing on the October town meeting, starting with, I'll wait for...
So this is, this is a whole ball of wax. It was informational hearing. We do have an informational hearing. This is a formal informational hearing for a town meeting.
Mr. Gilbert. Article one.
Is there a formal hearing notice, Mr. Chairman?
I don't think so.
There should be a notice in there. It was printed in the newspaper.
Was it in the packet?
Yeah.
Where?
It's item number six. Should be labeled on the upper right-hand side. I have a paper copy if someone wants to read it.
Oh, it's part of the motion?
Well, it's the notice of the public hearing. That you got to open one.
I'll read the notice of the public hearing. The North Reading Board of Selectmen does hereby notify the residents of the town of North Reading that hearings on the following articles contained on the October 13th, contained to, in the October 17, 2016 town meeting warrant will be held Monday, October 3, 2016, at 8:00 p.m., Room 14, in the town hall. And I'll read all of the articles. Article one is to meet and act on the reports of town offices and committees. Article two is prior year bills. Article three is transfer funds to Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. Article four is to appropriate money to the stabilization fund. Article five is transfer funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. Article six is to amend FY 2017 operating budget. Article seven is to rescind civil service of police. Article eight is to appropriate money for special counsel legal expenses. Article nine is to appropriate money for construction of facilities at Arthur Kenny J. Field. Article 10 is to fund redevelopment wastewater plan for section of Route 28 at Route 62. Article 11 is fund repairs to town buildings. Article 12 is to amend the code zoning bylaw, Section 200-39, changes to highway business zoning district bylaw. And Article 13 is to amend the code zoning bylaws, Article 13, Section 200-69, changes to off-street parking and loading. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, and if anyone in the crowd cannot hear me, certainly wave me down, and I will be certain to speak up. We have a PowerPoint presentation that we've been using for the past few town meetings, and we have been updating it along the way through this particular town meeting preparation. I'll start with Article one, which is to hear and act on the reports of town officers and committees. The selectmen have recommended. The finance committee has determined that no action is required. The motion with the board's recommendation will be made by selectman Yule.
Any questions from the audience on Section Article one?
We've not received notice of any particular committee providing an update, but we do expect updates to be provided during that portion by at least one committee. This is a courtesy slide that we provided, and very similar information is in the Board of Selectmen's packet for this evening. You see that our free cash has been certified to the million, to the number of $2,348,626. I won't go through each one, but you see there moving down the balances of the various funds that the town has available to it, which total available funds of just under $8 million. Again, $2.3 million of which is tied to free cash as of June 30, 2016. We have a summary sheet here for funding sources for the particular articles. Total appropriations or transfers in the amount of $868,663.95, and that's distributed between the funding source of free cash or raise and appropriate. There's also a potential for bonding associated with Article number nine, which I'll get to when we move further along. Perhaps it might be more efficient to just go article by article at this point, Mr. Chairman. For Article two, we have a total of $2,390.95 to be funded from free cash for prior year bills. I believe there are 12. Ms. Rook, is that correct? And again, that the motion will be made by selectman Yule and recommended by the selectmen and the finance committee.
Anyone in the audience have a question regarding Article two?
Article three, transfer of funds to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. Current balance, $983,962.42. The article, in line with the plan from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, would call for the transfer in of $200,000 from free cash, bringing the balance to $1.1839 million. The motion will be made by selectman Prisco. The selectmen have recommended, and the finance committee will issue its recommendation at town meeting.
Anyone in the audience have any questions regarding Article three?
Article four, appropriate money to the stabilization fund. This is the town's rainy day fund. Present balance, just over $2 million. The article would propose to add $200,000 from free cash, which would increase the balance to $2.250 million. It has been a couple of years since we've made a transfer in. We believe with the healthy free cash approval that we've received, that this is the time to make a transfer in. The motion will be made by selectman Prisco. The selectmen and the finance committee have recommended.
Anyone in the audience have any questions regarding Article four?
Article five, transfer in to the other post-employment benefit liability trust fund. Present fund balance, $553,888.13. We are not anticipating a transfer in at this time, as we have been addressing contributions to the OPEB liability trust fund at the June town meeting. We did request our actuary to update the amount of money that they would recommend we deposit in for new hires, the so-called approach of forward funding for all new hire employees. We have received that information, and we'll be reviewing it for a recommendation to the financial planning team for the fiscal year 18 budget, again, to be addressed in June.
Any questions?
And again, the motion will be made by selectman Manu Pelli, and recommendations to be made at town meeting by the selectmen and the finance committee.
Board members? Article six?
Article six, transfers for the operating budget, and Ms. Rook, if you don't mind, I'd like to turn it over to you at this point to walk us through the detail. I'll bring the clicker over.
Thank you. So Article six, we are amending the FY 17 operating budget. We have several transfers from various departments due to vacancies that have yet to be filled. So currently, we are through 14 weeks into the fiscal year. Some of these project going out to 20 weeks, and some of them even a little further, depending upon where the hiring process is for these. So the transfer from human resource salaries, $30,000. We are in the process of interviewing for a human resource director, so the $30,000 is for the vacancy weeks. Transfer from information technology salaries, this dollar amount represents the GIS coordinator position that was funded at June town meeting for $60,000. With the current situation in IT, with not having an IT director, this position is pushed out even further. The priority right now is filling the IT director position. Transfer from DPW town building salaries, this is due to the vacancy for the assistant building superintendent, and that position is very close to being filled. The board of appeals position, this is a vacancy that we have, and, you know, we hope to fill that position very shortly. Transfer from free cash, $174,000 to the salary pool. This is for contract settlements and the, we're calling it an unknown retirement, but it has to do with the death of the IT director. Fire mechanic salaries to police and fire. Our fire mechanic, our fire and police mechanic retired the first or second week of July, so the police and fire department have had to outsource their repairs of their vehicles, and this brings us probably to December 1st. So we're re-appropriating the individual salary to the expense line items to pay for the services that they have incurred so far on their vehicles, and we hope to fill that position by December 1st. Transfer from reason appropriate to DPW Road and Street. This item is a small capital, miscellaneous capital item for the DPW's trackless vehicle. It is a broom attachment for the trackless, and it was not part of the budget process because it was unknown at that time. And lastly, transfer from reason appropriate to the salary pool. This is for ongoing contract negotiations and settlements that are taking place.
I'm going to start with the board. Any questions from the board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gilbert.
So just a couple of things that I would like to note here that don't necessarily directly relate to town meeting action, but where this is a point in time where we are looking at the fiscal year 2017 operating budget. I think it's the most appropriate time to bring them up. The first is that a recommendation that we've received from the acting director of Public Works, Mr. Moylan, is to evaluate the rate structure for our hired contractual snowplow assistance. The rates have not been adjusted for some period of time, and they are lagging behind the market, and so we do intend to adjust them to reflect the market so that we can continue to maintain the level of contractual service that we need to provide the town with the service of snow plowing. That does not result in a change to the appropriation for the snow and ice budget, so it doesn't require any financial action, but I just take this opportunity to note it. We have advertised for interested parties to come and take the packet from the town hall if they're interested, and we do intend to reflect the adjustments in the rates to be paid based on the evaluation that the acting director has done. The second item that I would note is that we do have a vacancy in the zoning board of appeals administrative assistant position, and we are looking at potentially combining that position with an existing administrative assistant position for the conservation commission. It may not necessarily have a direct impact on the salaries in terms of the number of hours that are being provided, but it will likely create a benefit-eligible position here in the town hall at some point down the road, should that person look to take advantage of the benefit. That is subject to some discussion with the collective bargaining unit, but I just noted as something that we are looking closely at, in the interest of trying to provide some continuity here in the town hall. And the third thing that I'll note is that, if the board will recall, we identified that we were leaving a number of positions in the salary pool as unfilled in the Department of Public Works when we had the budget hearing back in April. We do, of the positions that we said we would fill back in April, we filled three of the four that we identified, and we're still in the process of trying to fill the fourth. Based on the recommendation from the acting director, we anticipate filling an additional three positions. Again, no action is required here because the funding is still dedicated in the budget in the salary pool. Again, we felt this was the appropriate time to bring these matters up here.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Manu Pelli?
I just have a question on that. Transfer from reason appropriate, 7675 to DPW Road and Street. Can you explain that one again? That's a piece of equipment?
That's correct, yes. It's transferred to the miscellaneous capital line item within the Department of Public Works. It does not qualify as a capital improvement because it is not a cost of over $25,000. It ordinarily would show up as a request as a small capital item through the operating budget. It was not submitted as such for last year. It is a piece of equipment that is companion to the new trackless device that we have, and so it is something important for us, because once we obtain that equipment, we believe it'll position us to dispose of the dated equipment that we're relying on as a backup right now, and to put our effort into the new equipment, this trackless device, for the small project work that it does.
I think at one point, some of the equipment, the attachments for the original machine, they thought they could rig and put on a new machine.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And it turns out that one was not possible to do.
This is actually a different piece of equipment. The piece you're referring to is the brush cutter. We believe there was a conversion equipment that we could, that we were told by a vendor that we could purchase, and we subsequently found out that while it would physically cause the new equipment to adapt to the old equipment, the rotation speed of the new equipment would burn out, of the old equipment would burn out the new equipment. They weren't designed to be compatible in that way. This particular piece of equipment is a broom and water tank, if I remember correctly, which would be companion to this trackless device that we have. The trackless does, or will do, brush cutting, snow plowing, snow blowing, I believe, as well, and I feel like I'm missing one other thing with regard to its functionality, but I just can't think of it. It's a multifunction device with various attachments.
This is a rotating broom and water tank.
Water tank, is my understanding, yes.
Just in relation to the town administrator's comment on the snow and ice budget, the adjustment to the subcontractor's costs, how much of a percentage increase are we anticipating? Because, I mean, I know we budget just a, I won't say a small amount, but a specific amount to snow and ice removal, and then have a side account for reserves to cover the additional costs, and then we settle up at the end of the year. What was the magnitude of the adjustment we're anticipating, and maybe not here, or maybe here, should there be an adjustment to the annual appropriation?
So the implication of the rate adjustment is forecasted by the acting director to be approximately 6.35 percent. That's the overall average that he's come back with. And again, because of the statutory requirement to, one, and the board knows this, but for those who may not know it, once you increase the appropriation for snow and ice expenses, the annual appropriation, you're required to maintain that increase in order to have the ability to carry over any snow and ice deficit from one fiscal year to another. That's very important, given the vulnerability that we have with regard to snow and ice expenses, particularly as we saw from two years ago. We try to plan ahead and reserve free cash to use in the instance that that happens, but once, effectively, once you increase the appropriation, you're unable to reduce it.
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five, and we hold two fifty in reserve. And we hold two fifty in reserve.
We hold two fifty in reserve.
Correct.
Right. Plus, we basically hold a fair amount of free cash pending what Mother Nation is going to bring.
I just wanted to know.
I wouldn't be opposed to adding twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, that's what I'm thinking here. I mean, if we're looking at a six percent plus across the board increase, just for general operating costs, because the cost of doing business and getting contractors, and believe me, I ascribe to the philosophy of underappropriating rather than overappropriating because we don't want to get caught into a situation where, you know, you've overappropriated and you don't have any snow. But I don't recall.
I don't think we've ever finished a year with two hundred thousand dollars.
We've never been in that situation, you know, so that, but at some point, we need to make some sort of adjustment to the regular appropriation.
Mr. Gilbert.
So one thing I could suggest, and we can certainly review this with the financial planning team, is to adjust the reserve. That would probably be my suggestion. When we put our financial plan together for the next fiscal year, we have the appropriation at one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for snow and ice. We hold this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we effectively have there, do not plan to spend.
We don't utilize that money and hold it if needed for snow and ice. Yes, I'm kind of leaning where Steve is, to take the one seventy-five number and just bring it to two hundred. I don't think that, carrying that each year, to me, is not an issue. It gets spent.
I don't recall any risk where we spent less than two hundred thousand dollars a year.
But.
Something we can review, and I know, gentlemen, you'll be at the financial planning team meetings.
Would you review and, you know, get back to us on that?
Certainly. Or perhaps the financial planning team at its next meeting.
Mr. Yu.
Yes. With regard to the snow and ice removal and the contractors. So we're not able to secure, if I'm understanding correctly, we're not able to secure contractors at the rates that we are paying? Is that what you're saying?
That has been a growing concern over time, our ability to continue to incentivize contractors to commit to work for the town of North Reading. And as time has gone on and the rates have been adjusted in the region or in other nearby communities, when I say the region, the Department of Transportation zones, it becomes more challenging for us to contract the equipment.
It makes me think that we should get together with the other towns and try to find out, you know, why their actions are increasing our costs. Because they keep paying more and then we have to, you know, follow them. We can't be frugal anymore because of the actions by other towns. We have to do it, we have to do it. But frugality seems to be going out the window, so frustrating.
Any other comments from the board before we ask the public feedback? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments regarding Article six? Article seven, Mr. Gilbert.
Mr. Chairman.
Through you, Article seven relates to the rescission of civil service in the Police Department. And I'll just read from the presentation here, although the Police Chief is here to answer any questions that might come up. The Selectmen and the police unions, both our patrolmen and sergeants as well as our police lieutenants, have ratified successor contracts that call for the elimination of civil service for new hire employees and promotions. This is something that would require legislative approval. And the first step in that is to obtain approval from town meeting to file a home rule petition to the legislature. Excuse me. The motion will be made by Selectman O'Leary. The Selectmen and the Finance Committee have both recommended, and I have additional slides that the chief has prepared that we'll go through. Just as a bit of background here, as the board is well aware, we conduct, we conduct hiring promotional disciplinary appeal, excuse me. The article would allow the town to conduct its own hiring promotional and disciplinary appeals process and decisions without being subject to the intervention of the state agency, the Massachusetts Civil Service Commission. Civil service for the Police Department was approved in nineteen sixty. At that time, it was nationally, it was looked at nationally as a means of combating favoritism in how government jobs were filled. Much has changed since that time, almost fifty-five years ago, including the civil service system itself. Today, there are one hundred and fifty-six civil service communities and one hundred and ninety-six non-civil service communities in the Commonwealth. The civil service system governs initial hiring, promotions, and any appeals of discipline. Due to the lack of staffing at the state level, the town's responsibilities for administrative mandates by civil service have increased over the years. One of the drivers of this has been the advent of technology that's been established in, at the state level and has been made available to cities and towns. The result of that is that the responsibility for the administration has also been placed upon the cities and towns, but still within the constraints of the civil service system. The chief has put together, and I agree with, some of the disadvantage of the civil service system, and I'll just go through them. There can be significant delays in the hiring process for new hires and promotions, and there have been significant delays. There's no community or department-specific criteria incorporated into promotional examinations. State office has historically been understaffed and it's at its lowest point in decades. And again, that's part and parcel to the reliance of the technology, which has pushed off some of the, most of the responsibility to the town. There is some manipulation by some applicants, and there are residency requirements that are involved, as well as layoff lists that exist. Layoffs from other communities go to the top of that list. The state has discretion over any new hire or promotion lists. There can be an overreliance on generic multiple choice examinations. There can be a very limited pool of candidates for those who have taken or have elected to take the examination. And there are prescribed minimal entrance or promotional standards in order to qualify to be on a list. Some of the benefits of a community-based system, which is what's being proposed here, a hiring process that can be specific to our needs, a broader pool of candidates, and we have seen experiences in communities such as Reading to our south, who see a large number of candidates come and take a promotional examination. We have the ability to increase the entrance and promotional standards that we establish. We can hold examination as often as we needed rather than being subjected to the statewide calendar. And we can time the hiring process based on the community's staffing needs and our overall goals rather than be subjected to the statewide process. We also have the ability to require a higher educational level for our officers. So next steps, if it was approved by town meeting, we would file the home rule petition in the legislature and work with our legislative delegation to see it approved. Legislature must approve that petition. The governor must sign the petition into law. Companion to all of this is the successor collective bargaining agreement that I mentioned before, as well as a policy, a promotional policy, appointment and promotional policy that the Police Chief has put together in the department, which we believe will be an important part of prescribing in writing how the department will function in the absence of a civil service system. Again, I think that the town, the town should expect to see a qualifications-based process where the town is able to select candidates from the variety and a large number of options that are available. I'm going to stop myself for a second, just turn it over to the chief. Chief, is there anything that you'd like to add, or have I, for now, hit everything?
I'll land some any questions.
Okay.
Okay, I'll open up for, any input from anybody on the board first? Mr. O'Leary?
Just, it's important to note that this article is being proposed as a result of contract negotiations with the Patrolmen and Sergeants Union as well as the Superior Officers Union. They are in support of the article. They intend on getting up and voicing their support at town meeting and recommending to those that attend town meeting to ratify this action. So I think it's a huge step forward for the department. I think the concerns in relation to hiring practices, promotional opportunities and practices, and disciplinary practices have been worked out with the unions so that they are comfortable with the proposals and what's been agreed to. And this is certainly going to enhance the town's ability to fill the vacancy with qualified, well-educated officers going forward. And again, enhancing the ability and opportunities for the current offices to continue to get additional educational opportunities, make sure that we have a well-educated workforce, which everybody, I think, would agree is essential at this point. And again, it provides us with an opportunity to have a larger pool of candidates to choose from. Current practices in other communities that have similar processes has resulted in hundreds of people taking examinations for a minimal number of, minimum number of vacancies in different communities. So it's really going to enhance the process, it's going to speed it up, it's going to allow us to fill the vacancies on a more timely basis and get the best qualified candidates for our department and our community. So I think it's a wonderful thing and I really want to acknowledge and thank the police unions for working with the community and working with the board to get to this point. So it's a great step forward in unity with the police officers, so it's terrific.
Any questions or comments from people in the audience? Okay?
Article eight, the appropriation of money for special counsel legal expenses. At the moment, this continues to be an article that we expect to be passed over. However, it remains on the warrant and a recommendation by both the Selectmen and the Finance Committee will be made at the town meeting. Motion will be made by Selectman Masseri.
Questions from the audience, anybody?
Article nine relates to the construction of facilities at Arthur J. Kenny Field. We have identified the Designer Services contractor who is in the midst of a master plan, excuse me, in the midst of a feasibility analysis. There are three layouts that are, the working layouts that they have generated in response to the request that we had issued. And those three layouts are the construction of public restroom facilities in the current storage areas of the team rooms and the creation of new storage space. Second, the construction of a new standalone building with public restrooms only. And third, the construction of a new standalone building with public restrooms and a concession stand. They're in the process of trying to identify cost estimates, which we will be presenting to the, to a joint meeting of the Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee that's scheduled for next Wednesday evening, October twelfth, at seven o'clock PM here in the town hall. And again, because the information is not available, we, at this time, and won't be available until at least the end of this week, to be discussed publicly on Wednesday next week, both the Selectmen and Finance Committee will be making recommendations at town meeting. The motion is proposed to be made by Selectman O'Leary.
Article ten? Oh, questions on that, I'm sorry. Anyone? Yes. Can you come up here or get to a microphone, just so the public in watching can hear?
Bill Bellevance, three twenty-three Hable Street. Do we have an idea for the costs or?
So right now, we've used a working estimate for construction of the building to include both, if it included both the concession and the restroom facilities. The working estimate we've used is five hundred thousand dollars as a construction cost. That was an estimate that we took approximately six months ago and used to try to come up with a responsible number for Designer Services at fifty thousand dollars, which is what was appropriated at the June town meeting. Those are very rough estimates. The whole purpose of the exercise was to get more reliable numbers by the designer.
And again, those rough estimates were based upon information given us towards by our project managers at the high school project, who were the project managers at the SX Aggie facility, which had a similar facility built. So, but again, round estimates.
Article ten?
Article ten would be to fund redevelopment or redevelopment and wastewater plan for a section of Route twenty-eight at Route sixty-two. I'll read through here, but I also know that the Community Planning Commission is well-represented and the town planner is here as well. But I'm just reading from this and they can answer any questions. The CPC seeking funds to create a conceptual plan and implementation study for the redevelopment of underutilized properties on Main Street near its intersection with Route sixty-two. Primary focus of the work will be an analysis of how the introduction, introduction of a privately funded and operated wastewater treatment package plant could be a short or midterm catalyst for the realization of the full development potential of these properties while the town pursues a potential long-term solution with the Greater Lawrence Sewer District. I'll note that this is the next step in the planning effort that's been underway for the past eighteen months in this particular area, largely funded by state grants and technical assistance, as well as the MAPC assistance, to look at trying to generate growth and additional development potential in this area. We recognize that our long-term plan is identified in the permitting applications calls for that connection to the Greater Lawrence Sewer District. This would effectively be an interim plan. And with that, I will stop and yield to the, to the, this Community Planning Commission if I've said anything incorrect or otherwise.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Nope. CPC?
Any from the CPC? Finance Committee, Mrs. Gilbert. Can you, can we get her a microphone?
Yeah, Abby Herbl, Chairman Finance Committee. I have a couple of questions. I have an overall understanding of what this article concerns and I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I have two questions, however. One is, how firm is that fifty thousand dollar ticket? Because my understanding was that it was between thirty and fifty or sixty and it was yet determined exactly how much it was going to be. And my other question concerns, the package plant could be a short or midterm catalyst for the realization of the full development potential of these properties. And I'm assuming that you're talking about the junction of Route twenty-eight and sixty-two. That, those seem to be fairly built-up areas with the possible exception of a gas station. But that's where you have Heavenly Donuts, that pizza place, Italian restaurant, and those all seem to be fairly, it seems to be fairly built up. So I'm not really a hundred percent sure where, in fact, this package plant would serve the, serve that area.
I think the board would have to defer it to the CPC. It is the article. And we haven't had a complete, the board hasn't had a complete view of the project either. Danielle?
So to answer the first question, after contacting several engineering firms, the rough quote that I've been given is between forty and fifty thousand dollars. Certainly, this would be a project we would put out for an RFP. And if we could get the project done for less than fifty, we certainly would. But we thought that, given that fifty was right around the number that most firms quoted us, we thought it would be safest to at least just request fifty. We hadn't really had a thought of asking for more. In terms of the nature of the existing built environment in that area, what we've heard, just general feedback from property owners, is that they may be inclined to do significantly more with their properties if there were a way to take care of the wastewater. So for example, even Stop and Shop with the current location of Ocean State Job Lots, they had been very open with us that they would certainly consider a more intense development in that, on that property if the zoning were right and if there were some way for them to take care of wastewater. Restaurants would become more feasible. Certainly, there are some food service places there and, you know, Kitty's is over there. We're not looking to, you know, move or displace anyone. I think what we're looking to do is offer those property owners the opportunity that if they wanted to expand, you know, if, for example, a smaller restaurant wanted to become a bigger one, or if a smaller retail establishment wanted to, you know, add additional types of services that are very heavy in wastewater needs, that they would have the opportunity to do that.
Mr. Yu.
Yes. Thank you. How far-reaching is this station here? It doesn't just help Kitty's and it doesn't help, necessarily help Heavenly Donuts. It doesn't just help Kitty's and it doesn't necessarily help Heavenly Donuts or Papagino's, but then how far-reaching? You mentioned Stop &amp; Shop to get that facility there, but does it help businesses north of 62? Does it help them expand?
Well, what we would like to do with this project, this project really would be sort of a pilot. If we could, our first question is whether it's feasible to do some kind of package treatment plant, and would it be helpful to the property owners, sort of in this very small and immediate vicinity, maybe looking at eight to 10 parcels? If the study came back and showed us that, yeah, this is actually something that's really doable, you know, and it seemed like something that could generate some interest among private property owners, I think we would really love to take that as a model and say, well, let's see where else we can do it now. You know, and to kind of use that as an inspiration or some kind of work that could be replicated elsewhere. I think initially to start for this amount of money for a feasibility study, the scope would be such that we would really be limited to, you know, this, a smaller area for the time being.
So are you thinking of package plants in different areas of town? Is that what I understood you to indicate?
With this study, no, not yet. We would want to see what the success was of a study like this. You know, for example, if the study comes back and says permitting looks like it's probably feasible, costs are maybe reasonable, you know, the resulting sewer infrastructure that would be put in could easily be repurposed, you know, once there's a sewer line going down Route 28. If we got answers like that, I think we'd be really encouraged by that. And we would maybe see what other property owners would be interested. I know, for example, a little bit further south toward the Reading line, there are some other properties that would be a good candidate for that, and at least one owner who's expressed interest in looking at something like that. So we really hope, we would hope that we would be able to replicate the effort.
So somewhat driven by the businesses and their interest in participating in a program like this? Obviously, if they all get behind this, then it seems like it's a winnable opportunity, if it indeed is.
Sure, sure, right. We wouldn't include anyone in the study who told us definitely we're not interested, we have no intention ever of investing in the future in something like this. You know, I have reached out, just out of preliminary way, I've reached out to a number of the property owners in that area, and no one has said no. Everyone has said, we're really interested in seeing what you could potentially come up with, and, you know, possibly in the future, we're not asking them for anything right now. We're offering to take the lead on the study and seeing what could be feasible for them. So, yeah.
Because some of the lots there are not, like Heavenly Donuts is kind of small, I don't know where they could expand to. They would probably just stay the way they are, but...
Right, that's true.
But Kitty's has pretty, they have a bigger parking lot than they have in establishment so. They could grow. Okay, thank you.
Bill, I have two concerns here, and maybe it's just lack of understanding. One is, I'm not 100% sure I know what a package treatment plant is. I think of the treatment plant that we put in at the high school costing us $150,000 a year to maintain it. And then I think about the Weston and Sampson plan to sewer Martins Pond, Route 28, Concord Street, the center of town, where, and build a treatment plant somewhere behind the post office area, they're on some town-owned land, a town-owned land we swapped, using land at the Berry property. And the town had a segment of land capable of 120,000 gallons a day of affluent absorption. And here we are in this process, the Board of Selectmen is, you know, as part of the DEIR, I know it's a little further out than the water project, clearly, to connect for the purposes of Route 28 and Concord Street and Martins Pond, at a minimum, to the Greater Lawrence Sewer District. So we got these things going on, and I would think that a bunch of business owners, if they're interested in putting in a package treatment plant and absorbing all the cost of that, that the town comes along a little later and says, hey, by the way, we're putting in a sewer line here and you're obligated to connect to it. I just see this conflict going on. And then the other issue is, I believe that the recommendation of the Economic Development Committee is to give up the amount of wastewater absorption area that, you know, under the agreement prior to the town taking full possession of the land is giving up. So you're going to put in a treatment plant or a couple of treatment plants, you have to have a place to dispose of the affluent. And, you know, I guess, you know, I gather the study is going to look into all of this. Chris, I see your hand up, so maybe you can...
All I wanted to say was Heffron property, two and a half acres, underutilized, just empty buildings there. You'll all forget about that, right between there and Stop &amp; Shop. So, and they may put it all together in a big piece of property to come out of that. Just so, you know, you were asking, that's one property we can say anything about.
Mr. O'Leary?
I'll defer to the chairman.
If I may, the package treatment plan basically can be put anything. And Lincoln Properties put one over on the Berry Center for those condos over there. It's not a very big building. If you go over and take a look at it, somebody can give you a quick tour. I think it's only a couple of people run it. It's a pretty nice little situation. They're also expandable, so that you could build it small if necessary in the beginning, and then if more property owners came on, you could expand on it.
Where were you when we did the high school?
I was asking for the money to put sewer through the whole town to be hooked the high school up.
Yeah, no, I understand that, Warren. I don't mean to come across as a wise guy, but I know that they built this system, they've had some trouble with it, I guess it's running pretty good now, but their budget, 150 grand a year.
For the high school.
And the, you know, and the affluent flow there can't be anywhere near what we'd be getting from some of these other businesses.
Oh, what Lincoln Properties is putting in from all those apartments. That's huge, that's huge. And yet, and yet their plant works. I can't speak to the decisions that were made on the high school treatment plant, but Lincoln Properties is one of those companies that's done this many, many times, they have it down to a science. It's not even a big deal for them. So obviously, it's doable, and it's doable at a reasonable amount of money, or they wouldn't have done it. And so that's more the model we're looking at. Towns tend to pay more for things when they're done that way, anyway.
I'd like to know what the maintenance cost over there is.
Well, actually, I think they would probably tell you and they could probably show you. It's a fairly well-run little system, so that's what we're looking at, something like that. Because you could build it to take care of, I know there's a couple of the towns that I spoke to, Georgetown is one of them, they were actually looking at building a common septic system for all of, for their downtown. And they were, and then they started heading towards maybe a package treatment plant because it needs, it creates such a clean product, it needs a much smaller leaching area than a standard-type system, so the investment is well worth it. If they would do something like that for those, for three or four properties, it would certainly pay off. You could get your density, you could build your heights, and the revenue for the town comes into play here, too. Even though it would be a privately-run situation, now the buildings that they're building are three and four stories instead of one, and the tax revenue comes up, and we haven't done anything except allow them to do it. It's very difficult to get something like this started. If the town doesn't step up and say, we'll support this, it will never happen. I was on the wastewater committee for, it's going to be almost 20 years now, and we failed to be able to get anything happening in this town. This is an opportunity to let the business people get involved, and let, show them what can be done, and give them an opportunity to do it. I think we could, I think if we do that, and there is, I mean, Chris is right, that Heffron property, as well as all those, there's a possibility for a fairly good-sized development there, but nothing will happen without wastewater. And we've seen that right along.
Can I also add, too, I do want to make sure, we want to be clear, we don't want there to be any conflict between long-term plans for sewer-ing the town and what would be really a very temporary, I think, kind of almost a stopgap measure. If we're not going to see municipal sewer in town for at least a decade, we hope someday it will happen, I guess.
I just, you said something, and I really need to clarify. There is no long-range plan by the Board of Selectmen to sewer the town of North Reading. The plan has always been to sewer the business district, Route 28, Concord Street, and to deal with the center of town, which we may have a different solution for today than we had back five years ago, and the issues around Martins Pond.
I think that's, I think that's what we mean. We want to...
Yeah, but...
It's okay to clarify that.
We're on TV, yeah.
So one of the things that would happen is, knowing that Route 28 and Concord Street and all those areas are prime for this, we would probably incorporate that into any design that was done for, or we'd ask that we incorporate any design done on these small parcels, so that the piping would be done in such a way that if we got a pipe in the street there, simply a turn of the pipe and to hook it up. And again, a small treatment plant like that can be moved, can be easily disassembled and put maybe in another spot where we could do, can't get the big pipe.
Thank you, Warren. Any other questions for Warren, Mr. O'Leary?
It's not so much a question as a comment, statement of support. Again, this is targeting a specific area, Route 62, 28 interchange. If you look at the properties that are there, there's a significant amount of opportunity for redevelopment on those properties with the opportunity for some sort of package treatment or sewage development. And I would think that the property owners, and I know a lot of them, are very interested, certainly, in increasing the value of the properties, going along with the development. I mean, you're talking about the Heffron property along with Stop &amp; Shop has been doing to us for the last six years, but given the opportunity, there's significant opportunity right there. You have right at the gateway of 62 and 28, you know, an abandoned gas station with a house next door that hasn't been utilized either. Again, with the opportunity to tie into a package treatment plant, even better. You have a recently cleaned-up gas station right at Route 62 and 28, where they just fenced off a huge, I don't know how large that parcel is, maybe you could help me out there, Mr. Member of the Planning Commission? You know, with the, you know, what you've done there with that gas station and the used cars and the mobile homes in the back, but that is a significant parcel of land that is ripe for redevelopment with the proper opportunities presented to them and allow them to do it. There's a significant parcel there. Same thing across the street, used to be an old gas station. And then you get Hashen's Building, you got Reading Lumber, all in a very close proximity. So I think the money would be well-spent to do the study, and if we could, you know, too bad we didn't appropriate some money to do with the southern end of Main Street, where all the interest seems to be right now in relation to, you know, with the Bolin Alley and Andrea's Pizza and those other two or three parcels right next door, which is now, all of a sudden, starting to percolate up and have things happen. Again, if we had some sort of a, the ability for them to do something like this, we could, again, see more significant development, economic development, in return on the town's investment, or their own investment, but tax-wise to the community. So this is a start. It's something as Warren said, you know, people have toiled away for a couple of decades or more on wastewater treatment and haven't made a significant amount of progress. This, the MAPC study, maybe else, is a good opportunity to take a good hard look at it and see what could be done, and partner with private property owners and work with them to get the appropriate zoning and permitting in place to make it happen.
If I may, this is part of our continuing support of the Economic Development Committee, give them something to work with.
Okay, Ms. Steele?
Yeah, I guess I'm going to be repeating a question. How, again, how far-reaching would this packaging plant be?
That's the beauty of it. It doesn't have to be far-reaching in the beginning.
It was a freedom.
The people at the Bolin, they could say, wow, that was easy, let's do one over here. So what we're going to do as far as the study goes, we're going to limit ourselves pretty much to the MAPC-studied area, because that, we have a lot of information on that area about what would go there and what could happen there. And so we're going to, we're going to look at that as our trial location, because we have all this information from the MAPC.
But I think, I think you mentioned that it was expandable.
Yes.
Correct? Okay, versus putting another in at a different location?
Practicality comes into play.
So, for example, I think you mentioned Heffron, you mentioned Ocean State now, and obviously you have Kitty's and Reading Lumber and so on. So what you are looking at putting in there now, what, how far-reaching would that packaging plant be?
We're going south, there's a significant wetland area, so you might run into that, so you're probably going to have to hop over that and you'd have to put another treatment plant.
That's true, yeah, that's true.
So there are some, you know, physical things that will prevent you from connecting too many in one plant, but also sizing. You're going to pick a location, you're going to size it, and you're going to put as many things into it as you can to even run out of space, basically.
So this one would be more like, what you're going to put in there is going to be it for that area, and you're not really looking at expanding that, except if it's a good idea to put another one someplace else, you'll do that?
We're actually going to let the study tell us how much we can get into it. We're going to let the study, and once that's done, when we show it to the business owners, they're going to have some say. They're going to say, I'm in. And the more people are in, the bigger our plant we can do.
Right, okay.
We have a lot of restaurants out on Route 28, and I dare say that the vast majority of them have difficulty with their septic systems. There's probably only a couple of them that are fully functional and good, so you're going to get, you put a plan together, if the town will take the lead and put a plan together for the community, you'll see the business community will get on board.
Well, I'm sure the board would do that if it was a plan that's beneficial for the community. I think we would do that. But would it go as far up as, say, the horseshoe?
Well, if that made sense, okay?
Okay, all right.
If that made sense.
Okay. I'm with you on that. I just, I'm just trying to get, you know, the concept is a good concept, I can see that, okay? Now, what is your timeframe in accomplishing this?
Well, we have the funds, we will immediately go off RFP for the proposal to put together the plan, and again, using our MAPC-identified area, gives us, we're multiple steps ahead already, because we already have an identified area with all the uses and all kinds of things. So it'll probably happen relatively quickly, but that will be determined more by how the RFP is going.
And all the customers that are going to participate in this? You seem to have a sense that X amount of customers are going to participate.
I have spoken to several property owners, not everyone in that area yet, but I wanted to get a read from at least a few of them, especially some of the bigger ones, and so far, people have been enthusiastic about it.
The ones I suppose do as well, say, if you get something going, we're definitely interested.
I believe Greenbrier has a wastewater treatment plant at their own, that they've had for years. I mean, Greenbrier has, they were one of the first ones in town to build one. How long has that been there? Thirty-five years?
And look, you look at that, how much, what the flows are there, so it's a very doable thing, but we have to lead. It's time for us to lead.
Okay, any other questions regarding, yes?
I just have a question, and I agree in principle of the whole, in theory, and if these were available...
You're over-modulating yourself.
Am I?
I can hear you.
Why wouldn't the businesses have done it already, especially those larger parcels? Why wouldn't Stop &amp; Shop have come to the table already and said, this is what we're interested in doing? Why are we doing it for them? And if there are all these, these businesses that are interested, what are they doing to contribute to this plan that we're using public funds to create?
I think over the years, we've, a number of times, the town has indicated that we were working on something for them, and we've never really, we haven't come through for them. And places like Stop &amp; Shop have spent a fortune, I can't tell you how many times, they've redone their septic system, and they're doing it again now, actually, and they're putting a treatment plant out behind the building. If you go out there and look, they are in fact now finally doing that, because that's what it's come to. So they are doing it. So, but what we want to do is, we want to, but they're big locations, so they have that ability, and they have a lot of tenants, so they have that ability. What we want to do is grow, we want to grow the part of Route 28 that's sitting there stagnant. So that's one of the reasons we studied that area, because it's a good, it's a good area, it's a primary area, it gives us some other opportunities from a, from a town point of view to provide perhaps some, a town-center kind of area as well. So there's some other possibilities in that area, and MAPC can see that as well. So if we, again, we need to, in some cases, you need to lead for a little while to get these people to put together a plan, so they'll see what the possibilities are and get on board. That's what we want to do.
And again, cost-effective-wise, you know, there are a lot of small property owners there.
That's right.
Individual small property owners who can't, it isn't cost-effective for them to go the route alone.
It's definitely not the fiscal constraint for Stop &amp; Shop. It's definitely not the fiscal constraint for Stop &amp; Shop. It might be far.
But if the town were to lead, put together the study, show some of the possibilities and solutions to the, for the area, you know, then all of a sudden, people can buy into the program and it comes together. So I think, I think what is, there's been a lot of talk and a lot of good ideas and well-intended efforts put in. But again, there hasn't been the financial commitment on the part of the community, hasn't made the financial investment yet to lay out the plan for them. Because individually, they can't afford it. It doesn't make sense. You know? So this is, this is a good opportunity, this makes sense. We're actually going to be, as Warren said, take the lead in laying out a doable plan for property owners to buy into, and economically it makes sense for them. And eventually, hopefully in the short run, this $50,000 gets returned in very short order in the way of economic development and tax revenue.
Any other comments, questions? Yes?
I think I should clarify something. It's getting a little confusing. This is a study only?
Yes.
To come up with a plan? There's no, the town's not going to build a package treatment plan, it's all these little parcels. It seems like we're just talking about building a package plant. Up here, over here, it's a study in a small area that can be taken to roll out all of 28 for all the different businesses.
We're not building it at all, though. It's going to be privately funded and operated. That's why I had the question on the expenditure for that, yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions regarding Article 10? Article 11. CPC, don't go away, we have some more questions, but Article 11.
Mr. Chairman, through you, this is the annual $50,000 funding of repairs for town buildings. We are very appreciative of the funding that was appropriated at the June town meeting and at the October 2015 town meeting. However, we do have building needs that fall into two categories. First, HVAC for the town hall. We have a plan from the Department of Public Works represented by Julie, who's here this evening, in her capacity as building superintendent. Julie, thank you for being here. The two projects that we're looking at for this are approximately $37,000 for HVAC work, and that would be called for the installation of so-called mini-split systems to address what will be five different offices in the town hall in the center portion of the building, the selectman secretary, two offices in the Department of Public Works, and what will be two offices in the Human Resources Department. The balance of the funding, approximately $13,000, would be utilized for construction work to create a second office space within the layout of the existing Human Resources office to accommodate the new position. We expect to be at or close to the $50,000 request that's here. Should we exceed that $50,000, we have achieved some savings in some other projects for, that were approved under the town building $50,000, that we could utilize that savings for to address the budget. We don't expect it to be much more than $50,000 if that were to be the case. The, excuse me, the motion will be made by Selectwoman Manu Pelli, and the selectmen and the finance committee have recommended.
Questions on Article 11? Comments? Article 12?
Jane needs some heat and needs some air conditioning. Sometimes she's cold, sometimes she's hot. It's not at the right time of year for some reason or another. Along with some other people.
Mr. Chairman, because they are seated here, I would yield to the Community Planning Commission, right at the microphone there, they have two articles, Article 12 and 13, relative to zoning. The selectmen have stated that they would make recommendations at town meeting, and the finance committee has determined that no action is required. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I turn it over to the town planner.
Thank you. I do actually have a brief PowerPoint to take us through. Oh, thank you, I can.
Depends on the size, depends on the ground. It could be a lot.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Thank you. So as a result of planning initiatives over the last two years focused on Route 28, the CPC is initiating zoning changes to highway business in order to help remove obstacles to development. And as we mentioned earlier this summer and throughout the previous year, MAPC completed a short-term economic development strategy for Route 28, which included a market analysis. And this, these zoning changes came out as a result of that. And in this effort, we're trying to attract and retain businesses on Route 28, and we're also going for a goal of trying to make it feel like more of a Main Street or downtown rather than a pass-through or a highway. Among the recommendations from the MAPC study were addressing wastewater challenges, as we spoke about, and also zoning deficiencies. Making mixed-use development easier is one goal of the zoning effort, and the purpose of this is to increase our capacity to absorb more retail along the corridor, as well as to encourage vibrancy and have more of a downtown character. And I should say, initially, when we drafted our zoning warrant article, a big part of it had been including, in certain contexts, as a component of mixed-use development, allowing residential multifamily development throughout the corridor. That's a pretty major change, and so on further discussion and reflection, the CPC has decided to hold off on just that one provision in this and come back with it at our next town meeting because we just felt it needed a little bit more study vetting, a little bit of long-term planning to make sure we understood any consequences. And I think what we will be doing is coming back at the next town meeting with a proposal to add residential to a small portion, probably the portion that we have studied through MAPC more intensively. So this presentation, which, the discussions had gone back and forth until pretty recently, so there are mentions of residential in here, so I will kind of clarify as we go through. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. But it wasn't only adding residential to highway business that was the impetus for this. We also really needed to streamline some of our permitting. There's a lot of housekeeping and cleanup that needs to be done, there are some contradictions, and we just, we wanted to prohibit some uses that are currently either allowed or not defined that we felt are not really of good service to the town as far as our goals. This really discussed some of the residential changes. So this is the target area for zoning changes. It would be all of Main Street, the whole highway business corridor. We would be proposing adding mixed-use development to the purpose statement, which currently doesn't have, allowing more than one primary use on a lot and more than one primary use within the same building through site plan review. Currently, you can do that, but you need another special permit, and we're just trying to remove some unnecessary obstacles to development. We also needed to clarify, permission to do drive-up windows and outdoor storage of materials is required, but the zoning bylaw doesn't actually say who needs to get it. So we wanted to clarify that that should be done by the CPC as part of the site plan review process. Some cleanup and contradictions that we needed to address. In the list of prohibited uses, so adult bookstores are listed as prohibited. As most of us know, we also have an adult use bylaw that allows anywhere in highway business within certain mandatory setbacks, all adult uses by special permit. So to add adult bookstores into the prohibited list, or to have it, to keep it there, really is not consistent with the adult use bylaw. So we really need to eliminate that from prohibited, because in reality, it's special permit. There were a few other, like 812-199 is listed, the industrial classification code is in the prohibited list. That is a category that includes things like saunas and Turkish baths. There are some things that are mentioned in there that also needed a notation, except as allowed by special permit pursuant to the adult use bylaw. So we have to be careful of allowing something through the adult use bylaw in one part of the zoning, but actually restricting it in highway business. And that's just to clean that up. And then we had cloud seeding and weather modification and rainmakers in the prohibited list, and the CPC agreed that that wasn't really necessary. These were the provisions we had been thinking of, multifamily to be allowed by right, subject to site plan review. These are the provisions that we would like to look at a little bit further. So the CPC's plan was to revive, to make a motion, you know, revising this article to just eliminate those provisions. But we do want to look, we do want to come back with a slightly, in a slightly different form of bylaw that would allow some residential in targeted areas of highway business in the interest of supporting existing and new businesses.
Are you looking to make an amendment to the article, or just, or just eliminate it from your main motion? If I could make a suggestion, just eliminate it from the main motion.
Just eliminate it, okay.
Otherwise, you're going to create a lot more discussion.
Sure, I think that's a good idea.
If that's what your, your plan is, just don't include it?
Just don't include it, yes. A similar provision had been thought of for assisted and senior living, 55 and over developments, that also we would be holding off on until the next town meeting.
What was that, sorry, what was that?
Oh, sure. So currently, senior and assisted living aren't allowed in highway business. So similarly to multifamily housing, we had thought to include this as a use that's allowed by right as a component of a mixed-use development, but not to exceed 80% of building area of any particular site. And we thought that that also warranted a little bit more study and looking at, just to be sure. We wanted to, in fact, allow it in the whole corridor or perhaps just a targeted area. We just wanted to vet that a little bit further.
What says, limited to 80% of square footage of buildings, cannot be the whole site? So someone would proposing a assisted living, or they can't just build senior housing in 55? This is what the proposal was?
That's what the proposal was, just in the interest.
So you were looking for mixed use on the, on the lot?
Right, that there would have to be some component of commercial there, so that we weren't, wouldn't be losing sites entirely.
I was just trying to get the, with the thought process.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Right. So currently, self-storage and mini-warehouse facilities are not defined at all in highway business, so the building inspectors are in a difficult position of having to make a judgment call as far as what they should be allowed under, if they are allowed at all. The CPC is proposing simply adding them to the list of prohibited uses. Currently, in the list of special permit uses, we have auto repossession service, but it's also listed in prohibited. So our thought was just to leave it in prohibited and take it out of special permit.
So that's going to, that's not going to be prohibited at all?
Well, it's in two lists now. It's in special permit and it's in prohibited. So the CPC's proposal is to keep it in prohibited and take it out of special permit.
Right.
So it would be prohibited. Some additional cleanup, we would need to add to special permit uses, adult uses as specified in Section 200-45, adult uses of the zoning bylaw. So 200-45, for anyone who doesn't know, clearly defines what adult uses are allowed, under what conditions. This would be just to make that consistent. Currently, also in our list of special permit uses, we have, actually, I'm sorry, in our list of permitted uses, hotels, rooming houses, camps and other lodging places, so this is currently allowed by right. The CPC felt it would be important to put that in the special permit list because hotels and rooming houses and other facilities like that warrant a little bit more scrutiny in terms of having a special permit, they felt. Then we have some changes to dimensional and density requirements. Currently, we have a maximum floor area ratio of 2.0, and we felt that that wasn't really necessary, given that there are other density controls such as setbacks and height limits on the properties anyway. Instituting an FAR of 2.0 seemed to give just an additional limitation. Eliminating that provision allows for a little bit greater flexibility for developers in terms of how they want to set up their sites. And if they, as long as they abide by the setbacks and height requirements, we really felt that floor area ratio was not necessary to have an additional restriction. That's really something you do when you want lower-density development, and I think we're trying to spur a bit more in terms of the commercial uses there. There was also a sort of an odd provision that allows a reward of a higher FAR if you provide excess parking, and I think one of the things we really talked about is we have an awful lot of parking on a lot of these sites, and we didn't necessarily want to provide a bonus for doing even more parking where it may not be necessary. So that, we propose to simply eliminate. We're proposing changing the minimum front setback just by a small amount. Currently, it's 25, we're proposing 20. And to keep the maximum height of buildings at 60 feet. There's also currently a four-story maximum. As long as we have a height maximum, we really didn't feel we also needed a story maximum. If you have a particular use that needs very, very high ceilings or very, very short ones, we really didn't think it was all that important to limit the number of stories in that way, as long as we kept our height requirement. And it is currently 60 feet, and that's not proposed to be changed. Parking currently is prohibited anywhere in the front setback area. So one of the things that came about as a discussion, as a result of some discussions with some developers who attended some of our workshop meetings, was that that's really limiting in some of the sites, especially in highway business with these smaller lots. And so what we came to is that we would want to allow some parking in the front setback area as long as it was nothing within the first 10 feet from the front lot line.
Excuse me.
Yes.
You went into questions already.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I need an example on the parking at the 10 feet, because along 28, they're not 10 feet back, right?
They're supposed to be, under the current zoning, the front setback is not supposed to have any parking in it at all. There are some, there are some sites that, there are a lot of sites probably that actually do have parking there.
There's a lot of them.
They're older, I think they're probably mostly grandfathered. It's just, it's a, I shouldn't say it's a newer provision, it's newer probably within the last, I don't know, since the 90s, I would say. And we just heard the feedback that it was limiting. No, we don't think it's a great idea to allow people to park right up against the front lot line because of visibility and safety issues, but we felt having at least a 10-foot buffer was probably enough.
Right, and that's around the whole property?
Just the front.
Just the front, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Bless you.
Any other questions?
Just in relation to this, obviously, we submit a site plan review of some sort or not? It's just going to be allowed, but, I'm just thinking about curb cuts, and again, some of these lots are pretty small, some of them a little bit larger, and some people just pull in, right? I mean, you've got.
Yeah, I think definitely.
How do we, how do you, how are you addressing, how do the current zoning bylaws?
What would happen, what would happen if somebody, if somebody come in for redevelopment of their lot? That's when we would probably impose that 10 feet, because as you said, and as we all know, there's quite a few lots out there where they drive, where they park right up. But if any redevelopment of that lot, we would, we would insist on the 10 feet back from the lot, front lot line. And that's so that people coming in and out of those parking lots don't have a restriction on the sight line, traffic coming either way.
I'm just thinking about some of these lots. I mean, if there's going to be some redevelopment on some of these lots, and you're going to reduce the front setback by five feet, so you're going to allow the building to come closer to 28, theoretically, it would give more room in the back of the building, and you're going to allow more parking in front of the buildings closer to the 28. I mean, for cars, I don't know, 15 feet long, if you have a big old boat, it's almost 20 feet long. How's it going to work? People are going to be backing out of the 28. But, and again, maybe you've already addressed it in site plan review in some instances if they're looking for some sort of a variance, but I'm just trying to visualize how it would work.
Well, I guess if you allow a building to be 20 feet, there's not a lot of room for parking.
No, but you're going to allow, you're going to allow 10 feet right up to the building. Which reduces green, which reduces green space, because they have to, in order to do that, they'd have to, it's just going to be wide open, no curb cut.
If they, if they put their building 20 feet from, well, first, let me just step back for a minute and say, current planning or common planning concepts are that you put the building out front and you put all the parking in the rear. That's what you're supposed to do, and that's what they teach you when they teach you planning. However, somehow or other, we never seem to be able to do that. We always seem to end up with the parking in the front and the buildings in the back. But if you were to follow planning protocol, if you will, all the buildings would be closer to the front, makes them more walkable for people that are on the sidewalk. building.
Right.
Which reduces green, which reduces green space, because they have to, in order to do that, they'd have to, it's just going to be wide open, no curb cut.
If they, if they put their building twenty feet from, well, first, let me just step back for a minute and say, current planning, or, or common planning concepts are, that you put the building out front and you put all the parking in the rear. That's what you're supposed to do, and that's what they teach you, when they teach you planning. However, somehow or other, we never seem to be able to do that. We always seem to end up with a parking in the front and the buildings in the back. But if you were to follow planning protocol, if you will, all the buildings would be closer to the front, makes them more walkable for people that are on the sidewalks, things like that. There are a number of reasons for it, and then all your parking would be in the back. But because of the small lots, we, we did two things. The two things are somewhat mutually exclusive. If you put your business back, if you put your building back twenty feet from the lot line, you are not going to get any parking in the front, which is fine. That's what we would like to see, and it would, you know, that way you'll have some green space out front, a little, a sidewalk, and people will come into your, you know, will be able to walk into your building. If, in fact, you need the parking out front, then the building will probably be pushed back a little, and it will allow, to allow for that. Because there are, you need, you know, the ten-by-twenty or nine-by-eighteen parking spot, plus the, about twenty-two feet or whatever to back out and turn around. So, one would allow, one would prevent the other from happening. If you wanted to do the parking in the front, your building would have to be setback further.
Good. You all set?
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Bill.
Is there more presentation than this last slide?
That's the last one.
All right, cool. Ready for thirteen? Oh, you have a comment here?
Yeah, I'll comment here.
Okay.
Good evening, Dan Mills, Five Green Meadow Drive, North Reading. Just about, just, all for economic development, I just want to just voice a concern that I do have relative to the elimination of the four-story building height and the continuation of the sixty-foot building height. That's in combination with the allowance of eighty percent of a development to be residential. I'm just concerned that we're going to end up with some large residential developments, up to five stories, that are not going to necessarily be, be compatible with the, the corridor. I'm certainly for economic development, for, you know, getting more activity along Main Street. I'm just concerned that those two coupled together, we're going to end up with some very large buildings, if perhaps a couple landowners were to consolidate their properties. I just have a quick sketch that I, actually, a clip art, really. So, I tried to pick buildings that were somewhat elegant-looking to some degree. I'm not trying to put a scare tactic out there. These buildings are up on the front of the street, these probably won't be in the front of the street. Most property owners like to put their development in the back of the street. They may have some underground parking, they may not have underground parking. But this is just, you know, if you look at the, the top slide and you put in characterization with the one-level storefronts, it's pretty dramatic that these are very large buildings. Again, I'm not trying to put a scare tactic out there regarding what could be built along here. I think that the more development that we have, the better. I just wanted to make sure it's in character with the community, and we don't end up with very large residential developments. Thank you.
Dan, I have a question, just on you.
To scale, how high are these buildings? Are they sixty feet?
I would assume that they're about less than twelve-foot floor, so at five, at five stories, it would be under sixty feet.
I don't know, Dan. I'm looking at cornices here that have got to be sixty.
So, I don't believe cornices are included.
They are part of the building.
Yeah, no, no, that's why I was just saying, I'm just looking, I'm just looking at the, the windows, you know, they look pretty big, you know, and so, I'm going twelve-foot, twelve-foot.
So, the first floor is typically, the first floor is typically ten to fif, to fifteen feet set, and then the remaining feet are ten to eleven feet tall. You're up to about sixty feet. It's not unheard of to get a five, a five-story building at, at sixty stories. It's not, it's clearly not. I'm just presenting this just for, I'm not defending these pictures or, you know, identifying cornices to that detail, I'm just saying that we're taking out a four-story building.
Came to mind was, you know, what, what is generally, or maybe you know, generally, what is a, a mixed-use construction? Generally, what are the ceiling heights? Again, more if it's going to be retail downstairs. For residential, what's the normal ceiling height? Is it ninety, ten feet? So, I don't know.
Well, just like a house.
Eight feet?
You wouldn't have, he's correct, you could get, with sixty feet, you could get the five stories in there. But that's one of the reasons that we took the residential out of our, out of our presentation, is because we are not comfortable yet with the way we have it in, in there yet. We do want, we, mixed use is also another encouraged use, and it's encouraged by the state as well. It's micro, you know, we've, and we've kind of looked at that, so we're going to, we'll do something along that, but we want to take a little closer look at how that would impact. This is exactly why we took it out, Dan, so that we could take a closer look at it, so that we don't get some impacts in locations that we haven't already planned for. We took, that's one of the reasons that the residential component is minimized in this, and as you suggested, we would remove.
So, right now, just for clarification, there's no residential allowed in the highway business district? And that's with the passage of this article? That will still be the case?
We're going to eliminate it from, during, in the motion, we're going to take it out of the, the residential component out of this.
Okay, so I was at the last CPC hearing?
Yeah.
And since that time, that's, that's what's, that has transpired?
Yeah, well, because there are, there are, there are a couple of issues, and one of them is the way we have it in there, there's a contradiction in there, we need to fix that. We want to make sure that what we bring forth, same reason that you, Roger, for, we want to make sure that what we bring forth is reasonable. Right now, we'll leave it at the sixty feet, if it was all commercial, that would be a wonderful building for us.
I think, if I could also clarify, we had a CPC meeting, right before this meeting, to review our warrant articles, and we did discuss this issue in part because we received, you know, feedback from, from you, and, you know, something that we want to make sure we get right. So, it was not very long ago that we decided that we really wanted to pull back on, on that one provision, just so that we could take the time over the course of the year to, to think it through, where we wanted it to be, how we might, how we might want to introduce other controls, and then come back in, in a slightly different form, just for that provision. So, it was very recent, and I-
Okay, so just to clarify, I was not at the latest CPC hearing, which was earlier tonight, I was at the regularly scheduled CPC meeting.
Warren, I have a question for you. Has the CPC voted to, on this article?
So, we haven't voted on the change, which we could do tonight, if that's helpful.
Why ask? Because the vote hasn't voted on it either. And generally, we don't vote without knowing the position of the CPC.
Well, that's why we did the presentation tonight, to make it clear that we have made that.
I think the vote we did take at our, at the public hearing was to, to recommend the article, but since that time, of course, there has been this change that's come about, so if you, if, if there needs to be a vote-
And I gather there may be some changes before town meeting, is that what I'm hearing?
No, I think, other than what we've just told you, we're going to, we're going to keep it the way it is, other than taking the residential component out. Everything else, if anything, stays the way it is.
Mr. Yule?
Yes, Dan, I just want to get a, a better clarification on your input. Were you suggesting that we should not exclude the four-story minimum? That was-
Maximum.
A maximum, excuse me. They're looking to eliminate that, if I understood correctly, and to go with just the sixty-foot. All right, is, is your thought process to say we probably should keep the four-story maximum in there?
My, the combination of the, elimination of the four-story and the residential was primarily my concern, but the building scale is also a concern relative to the character of the, of the corridor. Our forefathers, you know, you know, voted on a sixty-foot height. It has not come to fruition for probably several reasons. One probably waste, well, number one is probably wastewater, I would guess. But, you know, I guess, I don't see this scale of a building fitting in along that corridor. If, I just don't.
And, and do you, do you think having the four-story maximum addresses that? Is that what I, what I'm understanding?
Yes, I do. I think the, there's a building next to the Dunkin' Donuts near, Eastgate Liquors, across from there, that's three and a half stories. I think that's the, almost the tallest building along the corridor. It's about a three and a half story residential, residential building. And everything else is about three or less. So, I, again, I'm not, I didn't draw something up, I just took some clip-off off of the internet and thought that these were fairly large buildings at a, at a five-story-
So, you went to the max to, to make that point?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further discussion on this, moving along.
I just have one quick question. Are you contemplating making the residential portion a percentage of the square footage of the building, which would, in essence, shrink the building or raise the ceiling? You know, I, I don't know what your thought process, you're going to take the residential portion out.
For now, but, yeah, but ultimately, initially, initially, we, we actually went around for a little bit about what the percentage should be. And then, and essentially, the thought process came down to, well, if we did sixty feet, we'd probably be, as Dan said, we'd be five stories. And it's unlikely that we'd get much in the way of commercial in the second floor. So, but the first floor could be all commercial, and if we made it, if we made it eighty percent, then we would definitely get all first-floor commercial, and then we maybe have residential for the other four floors. That's not cast in stone at this point, because we're still, but that was our initial thought anyway, that's what we'd be saying.
Mr. Yule?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. Looking at this design and listening to what you just said, we're talking about four stories right now, that's what we have, maximum, correct? And with his example, you have five. When you say four stories maximum, you're counting the ground floor, I presume?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, because you just said something about you have business on the ground floor, and then you have four stories up, that's five. That's, that's why I'm trying, that's why I'm asking that question. So, it's really only four, so you can have one plus three, under the current.
Under current, yes.
Okay.
And one of the things to think about is that while that sixty-foot was put in there by our forefathers, by, by people on the floor, in an attempt, in an attempt to get economic development on the street, to allow it to happen, should we get wastewater? So, there was some planning going on there.
Okay, further questions on Article twelve? Article thirteen. Got another presentation, or?
No, that one's very, very key. I can go back to our-
Danielle, if you need to use ours, you can use ours too. We, we do have a presentation, a slide for it. It's up to you.
Oh, sure, no, I'll put it back now, I don't care. Where is?
Right up in the top there, over twenty, in the center, yep.
Actually, no, I don't need it.
Article thirteen.
Let's try to hear it, Dan.
Okay, so Article thirteen, sponsored by the Community Planning Commission. The Selectman's report will be made by Selectman Yule. Recommendation by the Selectman to be made at town meeting, and the Finance Committee determined there was no action required, and I will turn it over to the Town Planner and to Mr. Pierce.
Sure, thank you. It came to our attention, as we were reviewing some provisions in the zoning bylaws, that we had no specific parking requirement for medical offices. Typically, these have slightly higher parking needs than other kinds of offices, and so we wanted to just add this one provision to the current table of parking and loading, just add medical office, and to have the requirement be four spaces for each one thousand of gross square feet of floor space. Just after a little bit of research, it seemed that that seems to be the recommendation. Just want to make sure we have adequate parking if we ever have a new medical office proposal.
Mr. Chairman, through you, just, I just would ask the board to ignore the slides here, which seem to only relate to Article twelve for some reason, in the way they, they've been transcribed here.
So, it wasn't me?
It's not you, no. It's me.
Okay. All right.
So, ignore, ignore our slides for the moment and-
Article thirteen has just the one change regarding medical parking.
It's that one change plus one other, there's a footnote in the parking, the table of parking, that also required there to be an additional parking requirement for any mixed-use developments. So, in addition to adding up all of the various uses on a particular site and calculating the parking needs for that, for that site, on top of that, you had to do another space for each six hundred square feet of gross floor area, and we thought that that was excessive and not really necessary. And it's also confusing the way it's written, so just in terms of, in the interest of not requiring so much more parking beyond what we needed, and discouraging possible mixed-use development, we just thought it would be better to eliminate that provision.
Existing facilities, of course, are green power, so it will only be for new construction or changes and modifications to an existing facility.
So, so again, if we're going to be mixed-use with residential, you're not stipulating, what are you stipulating?
So, this is a provision that's already there. So, mixing uses currently, the way it's calculated for the parking requirements is you, you add up all of the different requirements for each of the uses already on the site. And then on top of that, you have another provision of one parking space per six hundred feet total. It's just an extra additional amount that's currently required that we didn't really see the need for.
If mixed use doesn't necessarily mean residential, it means it could be two different kinds of uses, or three different kinds of uses, that normally would require multiple special permits, and as we talked about earlier, they could all be lumped under one special permit and keep the paperwork down. But also, to do, calculate the parking for that mixed use, which might have a little bit of warehouse in one corner, and then a doctor's office over here, so each one of those has their own parking calculations. And so, what we would do is do the calculations for each use, and then add it together for the parking. But there was an additional stipulation there, that for every six hundred square feet, there was another parking spot. So, we eliminated that, because it was redundant.
Is the CPC unanimous in their recommendations on these, well, three articles, these two and the, and the redevelopment wastewater plan?
They haven't voted on it, yeah.
Well, they did on their recommendation, their initial one, but it just out the amendment.
Mr. Vino isn't here tonight, but the others?
Okay, any further questions regarding Article thirteen? Or any other questions for the CPC? All right, moving right along then.
Thank you, thank you. Are we going to take a recommendation, are we going to make recommendations tonight?
Yes.
If you want to hang out, you can see what we do.
So, there's, right now-
Yeah, Warren, yeah, they did.
Steve, right now, there's, there's motions for Article five, six, eight, nine, ten, and twelve.
Ten, twelve, and thirteen.
Yeah, that's, I couldn't find one.
What's that?
There's no motion.
There isn't one for thirteen there.
Well, we can make one anyway.
What?
Aren't we having a meeting?
Huh?
Aren't we having a meeting? We put it down, didn't we set up a meeting?
So, we, we voted on, so Article, Article five, transfer funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you want to close the public hearing on the-
Yeah, I'll close the public hearing, thank you, Steve. Mrs. Manapelli?
Yes.
Article, there's a motion for Article five.
Is there?
And what are you doing?
Are you sure?
I am.
We're not going to do it here right now. Go back to five.
I would recommend holding on.
Okay, I see it. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting, Article five, transfer funds to other post-employment benefits liability trust fund.
Well, you're just, you're just going to move to make the recommendation at town meeting?
Right.
Right? Which is what we have already-
We've already done that.
So, we're all set.
Okay, so we're not re-
God, we did this already.
No, we did, but in case-
I think-
We change our opinion, we can change it.
So, what are we doing?
I think the town administrator put those in the packet, in case we wanted to-
Make a recommendation, right.
Make a recommendation if we didn't make any, or change a recommendation. In this case, I believe based on what you said in your presentation, we're not making any change. We will make a recommendation at town meeting.
Right, so no further actions required.
So, we can pass over that.
No further action, quiet at five.
So, we don't need the motion, so I'm going to withdraw the motion.
Jeff didn't say anything yet.
But are we still-
So what are we doing?
I think the town administrator put those in the packet, in case we wanted to.
Make a recommendation.
Either make a recommendation if we didn't make any, or change a recommendation. In this case, I believe based on what you said in your presentation, we're not making any change. We will make a recommendation at town meeting.
Right, so no further actions required.
So we can pass over that.
No further action required of 5.
So we don't need the motion, so I'm going to withdraw the motion.
Jeff didn't say anything yet.
But are we still going to talk about it? Because I think we should earmark something or put something into that trust fund.
I think we'll, it'll be a financial planning team discussion, which will come back with a recommendation, I think.
Can discuss it on October 12th at the financial planning meeting, yes.
And it may not take place until.
The, the issue is managing enough free cash to deal with Mother Nature.
Yeah.
And other things, and then if we feel comfortable that we can put additional money in there at this time, we should. We're really waiting for the actuarial on the, remember the board, initially when we started to try to deal with the, this, we said, let's go ahead and start funding all new employees. And that requires.
Right.
Every, at least every couple of years to take another look at it, and get more information from the insurance people as to what we should be putting aside, to assure that.
We're also going to chip away.
New employees from the beginning are covered.
We're also going to chip away at the deficit, but.
Right. Well, I think we're going to have to deal with Hurricane OPEB if we don't start making a regular contribution to it, so I would think what we heard was, doing it now is the wiser choice, because you're making an investment on that.
No, I think you're missing a point.
I don't think I'm missing the point.
We already put money in for this year. This would have been additional money.
Right.
And we're waiting for some information to determine how much additional money we should put in.
I understand that. I'm not missing that point at all.
Okay.
Yes. But anyway, we already voted on this at the last meeting, so I'm going to withdraw that motion. Should I make a motion on Article 6?
I would request a motion, because we've gone through and believe that we have the aggregation, and we'd ask for a recommendation.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 6 amend FY 2017 operating budget.
With the dollar amounts laid out in tonight's presentation.
With the dollar amounts as.
Do you hear a second?
I did.
Second, Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
With regard to Article 8, through you, Mr. Chairman, I do not recommend any further action at this time. Similarly, for Article 9, no further action necessary at this time.
Okay.
For Article 10, we are, I believe we're holding a recommendation at town meeting. We have heard the presentation of the Community Planning Commission, as well as the dollar amount, ideal to the board, but would encourage the board to recommend it.
I would move to recommend it, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting Article 10, Fund Development Wastewater Plan for Section of Route 28 at Route 62.
Okay, motion to be made at town meeting.
No, we're going to make, we're recommending it now.
Now.
We're recommending, that was your motion.
Why don't you say town meeting?
That's Kate's motion, and I'll second it.
Who made it?
Kate.
Kate made it, and.
Okay. Steve seconded it. Any further discussion on the issue?
Nope, good investment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, through you, that leaves us with Articles 12 and 13, the two zoning articles, for which the board has not yet made a recommendation.
And I think we should continue to make the recommendation at town meeting. I'd like, it seemed to me that there may be a couple more minor changes coming.
No, they said there were going to be no more changes. What they said was they just take.
I heard what they said, but. But we don't have a document in front of us that says this is what they're proposing, right?
Well, they have.
They talked about making some changes tonight.
No, they were talking about the changes that they were proposing, which is take out the residential portion.
Right.
At this time, which, again, as far as what they were proposing, conceptually, I'm okay with it, I'm fine personally, but if you want to wait until town meeting, that's fine. I don't think we're going to get any more additional information from them.
No, I'd just like, I'd just like to read the proposal.
But they, they, they said they didn't vote on it. They said they could vote on it, but I didn't see them.
They have not voted on it.
I have not seen them take a vote.
No, no, they said they voted on removing the residential portion of it tonight.
They didn't vote.
They previously recommended it, and then tonight they voted to pull that portion out, which was, again, a modification to the original motion.
I don't think they voted on it yet.
They may, I saw this and that, but I didn't see any, any formal.
My recommendation to the board would be on Article 12, to specifically 12, to make a recommendation at town meeting.
Second.
Well, I'm not making a motion, I'm making a recommendation.
Just being silly.
Okay, so no further action required at 12.
In Article 13, I have less of an issue.
Yeah, I move to recommend Article 13.
Right now, it's recommendation to be made at town meeting. Do you want to just leave it that way?
But they didn't vote on it.
13 they did. It was 12, it was the residential one they won. No, this is the parking one. That, that hasn't changed. Parking one on the medical buildings, that hasn't changed. The recommendation was already made, they made that at the last meeting, at their last meeting, and there were no changes.
Right, I didn't think that was an issue, so. Someone want to make a motion to recommend?
Yeah, I'd move to recommend Article 13.
Do we have a second?
I guess I'll second.
Second, Mr. Yule.
For the purpose of discussion, right.
Do we need any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Silence.
I guess silence is unanimous.
The town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did you vote for him?
I didn't.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, first, as has been publicized in the newspaper, the Board of Health will hold its annual influenza vaccination clinics this week, on October 4th and 5th, Tuesday and Wednesday, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Walmart Superstore located at 72 Main Street. This format is a pilot partnership with Walmart, which will be evaluated at the end of this particular season. Please note that the Board of Health will continue to offer state-supplied and purchased vaccinations for seniors and residents age 18 and younger at clinics later this month, once those vaccinations become available. And I've attached a copy of the flyer, which is posted here in Town Hall, and was also run in the transcript last week. Secondly, attached, please find a draft letter that I intend to send to formally notify Redding Municipal Light Department of our intention to turn on the shut-off streetlights once they are converted to LED streetlights. As you know, even when turning on these lights, we experience a savings due to the improved efficiency of the LED fixtures. There are a few lights that, when scheduled to be turned off originally, were adopted by abutting property owners and turned on at the expense of those abutting property owners. The town taking back responsibility for these, approximately 50 adopted lights, once converted to LED, was factored in to RMLD's financial analysis provided to the town for planning purposes last year. We will need to monitor progress, as the pace of the program will dictate the amount of savings that we see. Currently, the program is in year two of three. Thirdly, the Garden Club has offered to replace one of the overgrown bushes adjacent to the Welcome to North Redding sign on the common. With the assistance of DPW, the overgrown bush was to be relocated to Ipswich River Park, and a new bush to be planted in its place. And we thank the Garden Club for its stewardship, and the Department of Public Works for their assistance. Fourth, the annual senior tax work-off program applications are available now at the library, the senior center, and the town hall, and the town clerk's office. The new program begins on Tuesday, October 11th. A special thanks to Karen Marlin for her continued efforts to sustain this program. Bear with me one more moment, Mr. Chairman. Three additional items. First, you may notice that there was some cleanup that was done at the site of the former J.T. Berry property. The Department of Public Works was there to trim back some of the access point on the front where the gates are, as well as the overgrown field in the rear part of the property, obviously aimed to continue to incentivize some interest from the private developers for the parcel. This is a continuation of the maintenance that the state had been provided on the parcel, and my understanding is it will be a reimbursable cost as we go through that transaction. Secondly, with the assistance of the Town Planner, we recorded a production with NorCam that should be available up on the NorCam YouTube and online. Around Wednesday, thank you, Phil. It's aimed at identifying at an overview level the many planning efforts that are underway, some of which were discussed this evening, and also provided a preview to the October town meeting. Finally, I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Andrew Lafferty of Georgetown as the Director of Public Works effective Wednesday, October 5th. Andrew was forwarded to me by the Screening Committee assembled in the spring, which evaluated over 20 applications and interviewed seven candidates. I thank the Screening Committee members, Finance Director Elizabeth Rourke, Acting Public Works Director Robert Moylan, Police Chief Michael Murphy, Parks and Recreation Operations Manager Maureen Stevens, and Human Resources Administrator Allison Olson, for their hard work over the summer evaluating candidates. Mr. Lafferty brings 15 years of municipal public works and engineering experience to this position. He was most recently the Public Works Director in Linfield, and previously served as Deputy Public Works Director for the City of Newburyport, Senior Civil Engineer for the Town of Wakefield, and various engineering positions in the private sector prior to that. He is also a U.S. Army reservist. His annual salary will be $115,000. That concludes my report for this evening. We welcome Mr. Lafferty.
Any questions for the town administrator?
Nope.
Moving right along. I just want to bring up one thing. Oh, you have a question?
Actually, I had a question. I just, I just want to thank the TA for diligently going through a process of trying to hire the best possible and best available person as a DPW Director for the Town of North Redding. Hasn't been necessarily an easy process, and it's been a, a long process, and I know we've been wanting to have somebody as soon as possible, and I, I don't think that the TA compromised himself at all in his process of making sure that the best man was chosen for the position. I have complete confidence in his choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Before we go into all the new business, although this is probably old, old business, I've been informed, we have a strategic planning meeting scheduled for Thursday of this week, and I've been informed now that Jeffrey may not be able to make that meeting. Is that correct, Jeff?
It, it's very doubtful that I would be able to make the meeting because of the surgery that I will be having. I am told that it.
Seeing that, seeing that it is our strategic planning meeting, and one of the important meetings that we hold during the year, it's appropriate that all five members of the board be at the meeting.
I appreciate that, thank you.
We had picked that date earlier than in the past, so that Mr. Gilberto could apply our strategic plan to the direction he gives all the department heads related to the budget for the next fiscal year, as that gets kicked off. So how do we, what options do we have? When will you be available again?
I only know what people are telling me about this, this surgery, that it's very painful, you're on drugs for a long period of time, and so on. So I would, I would suggest this, if, if, anywhere between seven and 10 days, I think that, you know, I don't want to hold things up either, but I should be at least in some condition to be able to participate within seven to 10 days.
You won't be so dopey then?
Well, no more than normal.
Yeah, okay.
And Michael, how does, well, first of all, we have a missing member, so we don't know if Michael Frisco's available.
How about, how about if we look at somewhere around, that was a Thursday evening, how about the 27th? He won't be there? Okay.
Are you sure that's all? I mean, you're going to be at town meeting?
I, I hope to be at town meeting, yeah. You know, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I just, I don't, I'm normally a quick healer, okay? I normally am, but this is uncharted water for me.
How scary is, you know? They didn't say six weeks to get something. But we already, we already have other things planned.
Right, let me just do something here.
Steve has proposed the 27th.
Kate said she can't.
Yeah, but I won't be here then.
You won't be here?
No.
All right, and about the following week?
What about the 20th?
October 27th? It's Saturday.
No, 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 I said 27th. I was looking at a Thursday, because we're doing Thursday. I mean, I know the good secondary school building committee, capital improvement thing, we could get some other.
The 20th?
No, I'm just saying, I'm looking at other Mondays and Tuesdays.
Well, the 20th would be, you know, right after town meeting.
I don't know what I'm doing that day. That's my birthday.
It's your birthday? Well, we could have a cake.
We could have a cake. Would you want to celebrate it with your nearest and nearest?
If you promised to bring me a cake, I'll.
You spend so much quality time on this anyway.
Do you like chocolate or vanilla?
If you promised to bring a cake, I'll put it in there.
No, no, she celebrates your birthday.
I've had plenty, it's fine.
Can we try the 20th?
Yeah, sure.
That's her birthday.
I come on my birthday, you know?
No, that's fine, that's good.
Okay, we'll have a cake for the, we'll have to confirm, I'll confirm it with Mike. So we're canceling the.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that consideration.
The 12th is.
This Thursday's meeting, it will be canceled. And we are shooting for the 20th. And we'll get back to everybody to confirm it. Right now, I know that four members of the board can make it. Check with Michael Frisco.
That's going to be.
I'll also.
At 6:30. Correct, same.
Same time. Maybe the same location, that will have to be determined.
We'll try to confirm, hopefully.
Okay, I, I know that sets you back a little bit, but.
I'm sorry.
No need to apologize. Mr. Chairman, through you, really, the request I would have is that we just have an approved strategic plan update for the November 4th department head meeting. That's really the deadline that I'm trying to work towards. I'm sorry, November 2nd, excuse me, not November 4th.
So we're going to move it to the 20th tentatively, and I will get back to everybody.
Sounds good. We could always be on Halloween with our costumes.
Look, she's coming on regular gown.
Okay, all the new business, Mr. O'Leary.
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. One is, just as a follow-up to the appointment of the new DPW Director, certainly want to, I think we need to extend a letter of appreciation to Mr. Moylan for filling in and doing a great job in keeping the ship afloat and stabilized. I think he stayed a little longer than he was anticipating and than he wanted to necessarily, but I know the town administrator certainly appreciated his, his efforts in doing so, and I know as a member of the board, we certainly do.
Could we draft up a, a thank you letter?
Certainly.
Signed by the board?
Think he'd really appreciate that.
Yeah, I think it's, it's certainly warranted, he did a great job.
I mean, you and I can, on a Wednesday meeting, put something together.
Well, I'll have a draft for us, still get.
And just the other thing is, just extend, you know, my condolences to Deputy Fire Chief Barry Galvin on the passing of his father, James, this past week, and, you know, makes very difficult, father of five, and sounds like a great guy when I heard the write-up about him, and quite a long and successful life, so to Barry and his family, you know, my condolences. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Steele.
Yes, likewise, I express my sympathies to the Galvin family. You never like to lose somebody like a father, but when you are fortunate enough to have somebody as a father for so long, they stay in your heart, they never leave, so they can, Barry can take that with him. Two things, our power poles. I was reading in the, I think it was the Middlesex paper, or was it Globe, one or the other, that they are using second, there are secondary uses for the poles now, and I forget what it is, I shouldn't bring it up if I can't remember, but on top of the poles, they're putting on, they're not dishes, but they, they are able to, it's third-party equipment that is able to communicate either TV or cable, or not cable, but Wi-Fi capabilities. But it's just another thing that they're adding on to the poles, and what they found is that they're adding them on to the poles that, you know, where they have double poles, they're adding them on to the pole that's supposed to be removed. they're adding them on to the pole that's supposed to be removed, and so they're having problems now because, you know, everyone's pointing fingers at everybody else about who should remove it, and, you know, we can't remove it because that's on there, and so on. I think that, I'll get the article, and I'll send it to you because I think it's important, but I think we need to stay ahead of that, because we might see them popping up around town with these new third-party gadgets on it.
Well, they're going to need permission from Redding Municipal Light, because Redding Light owns the poles.
Well, you know, that was the whole article about, they were saying, the light company's saying they don't own it, and-
No, but in North Redding Light Company owns the poles, for sure.
So, I'll get the article, and-
In other words, for a private enterprise to put something on a pole, they have to get permission from Redding Light.
Yeah, I mean, whoever owns the pole, they have to get permission, okay? But there's a roundabout law on it, and where they have the right to do it.
And there's no doubt there's been a problem getting utilities off of the poles-
That's right, that's right, that's right. The other thing, anything further on the Mill Street Bridge with Redding and so on? Is anything, you know?
Just that the Town Engineer met with the Conservation Commission on Wednesday evening, and my understanding is that it was a productive and amicable meeting. I have not touched base with him with regard to any next steps, whether he's going to be going forward with an additional filing, but my understanding was we are on a path towards resolution. That's my understanding.
Oh, good, because I was driving over the bridge, and I said, you know, let me take a look at this bridge, and let me see, look at the foundation. And what I noticed is that on the southwest side is fine, okay? On the northwest side, I can see some dislagement, I think that's our side, okay? And then, on the Redding side, on the southeast side of the bridge, I saw some dislagement there, okay? And then, on the northeast side, it's all sledge, or, yeah, sledge. It's not, it's not the same granite that you have on the other three, it's just sledge. And I was wondering about that, okay? So, that, you know, that was my observation, observation there, and for what it's worth, but there was some movement on diagonally, on the Redding side, and on the North Redding side, on the granite, they had obviously moved out, from what I could see. So, I don't know if that was discussed or anything like that, but that was my observation on that.
I believe the northeast side was the most repaired, most recently repaired side, if I'm not mistaken in my orientation. Picturing Mill Street as north to south, the northeast apartment.
Yeah, it's going right into, it's going right into 28, that's why I said north to south. If it's east to west, then I apologize.
But I believe that northeast side you described is, the name of the repair that was made, the type of repair that was made escapes me.
Oh, a long time ago.
No, no, this is the immediate repair that was made at the end of August on that particular area. I believe that's the repaired side, if I'm not mistaken.
I would look into that then, because there's a gap like that, I could see where the granite has moved out, away from, they're not close. You look at the one that, on the southwest side, which is the Redding side, okay? That's nice tack, it's, you know, but you look at the one on our side, there's a gap about this much, where it's moved out. And if you, there's a similar thing on the Redding side diagonally, meaning on the southeast portion, there is a dislagement about that much, but it's in versus going out, okay? So-
I'll speak with the Town Engineer.
Please. Thank you. That's it. It's hot in here.
I also wanted to just extend my condolences to the Galvin family, and wish them comfort and peace at this time, and just bring up again something else that I've mentioned before, which is that I think there needs to be a light at Central and Park where all the bicyclists and walkers cross and-
Well, look to me, I'm strongly opposed.
Cars, cars, you know, it's a tough intersection, it's a little, it's pretty dangerous for all of the parkgoers, I think, and cyclists and stuff, so I just want to figure out how we can possibly consider that. And that's all.
If I may.
Well, Mike had his hand on it, but Bob's not listening, so. Bob's not listening on it.
He listened, he took note.
That was it.
So, I'm taking-
Go ahead.
You're on. Nice to get a little better on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, there was a, there was an initial study aimed at looking at that particular intersection initially, in the beginning of the fiscal year 2017, and I'm looking to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee members, I believe the fiscal year 2017 capital planning process, that, let's just say, didn't go very far in the planning process. And as a result of that, the Police Department, the Public Works Department came back and said, well, can we look at perhaps making some pedestrian-oriented improvements at a series of locations, including that one particular location, rather than just looking at that location for a traffic light? And unfortunately, but at the moment, I think that that strategy was identified, was the moment that there was quite a bit of turnover in the Department of Public Works, so it's something that I expect will be picked back up by the department later this year to be evaluated. Again, it's, by any stretch, we know that improvements at that intersection are likely to be costly. One of the suggestions that came, I believe, out of the Town Engineer's office was to look at maybe more modest improvements to improve the way traffic interacts without necessarily putting a stoplight up at that location. That was one of the options that they were looking at. But again, this was back in March, and it has sort of been set aside because of everything else that's gone on in the department. But I can tell you that I believe that it's still on the radar as something that needs to be looked at, particularly the pedestrian aspect of it. Excuse me.
Anything else, Kevin?
No.
Mr. Jeff.
Yeah, if I may. Can't, won't they consider a warning, it's a state law, pedestrian crosswalk, why can't we do that?
Those are the types of thing, I think those are the types of-
You know.
Yeah.
Sorry. Wasn't recognized. May I, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I think that's one of the things that, that's the type of thing that the department wanted to consider for evaluation, maybe something a little more proactive or noticeable than that. Something along those lines is something that's been identified as an option. But again, I'm speaking kind of off the cuff-
Right, right.
And not having the scope of work in front of me.
I know at certain times of day, at certain times of day, particularly in the afternoon, the traffic from the center of town, don't mind the high school, the center of town, goes back beyond that intersection, I don't know how to call it. I mean, the other afternoon, it took me, coming out of Oakdale Road, to get to the library, seven minutes. And that's approximately three quarters of a mile, maybe, half a mile?
I think that, yeah.
Not even that. Seven minutes.
Yeah.
When I introduce another light, doesn't, I mean, I can, the pedestrian issue there is a real issue, you know, as far as traffic issues.
High school kids, and the middle school kids walk to the park.
Oh, yeah, they do, you know, so I mean, if you're looking at some sort of pedestrian, you know, crosswalk.
Have you driven down 62 in Danvers, TV? I'm not sure exactly where the line is, where they've got some crosswalks that light up.
Yeah.
When someone, you know, whether there's a button there or haven't noticed, but-
Right, but as far as a full-fledged traffic signal, we're just-
It's not a traffic signal, it's just a flashing light above, letting-
That's a tough rise coming easterly on 62 in the afternoon, there's a blind part of the road.
Right, but there's a, there's a light up at Park and-
Freedom.
Freedom, and there's a light right by the high school, so it could be regulated so you're not sitting in the traffic for the whole time.
Still not working. I still didn't even go, can't go right on right coming down on Haverhill Street either, right?
It's pretty dangerous, and I-
Particularly pedestrians.
It's very dangerous.
Kate, give me the else.
You know what I wanted to say, I forgot, one more thing. They did put up the speed sign that alerts you to your speed on Central, so that's pretty good, as you're coming down Central.
I haven't been up there recently.
Oh, I haven't seen it. That's good. People need to be reminded of that.
I didn't see it because you were driving so fast.
Probably.
No, it actually has a, almost like a strobe light to alert you that you're driving too fast.
Where is it?
Right on Central, midway down, towards-
Downhill?
Yeah, in the middle, near Winterberry.
Go to Winterberry?
Near Winterberry, that area, yeah.
My condolences also to the Barry Galvin and his family. Clearly, any family loss is always something that it's hard to get over. Town meeting, the handicap, and those that need assistance, is that all squared away now?
Yes, yeah, I mean, there's a pretty good plan that's been put in place between the Town Clerk's Office and the Superintendent's Office to improve accessibility at the high school. You know, again, we'll do our best to try to accommodate, and, you know, if there's things that we can improve on, we'll improve on, but we believe we've got the basis-
And those that want to sit down front instead of in the back, will the elevator be available?
My understanding is that the elevator, which has been locked during town meeting, will be open and available to be utilized.
Okay. So, I attended two events, the Veterans Dinner, I want to thank Susan Magna for her efforts, another great turnout, good entertainment, food was good, I guess.
I got mixed reviews on that.
And hopefully, she raised some funds to support some of those veterans in need. And then, yesterday was the golf tournament.
How'd you do?
Not the greatest weather.
Did you win any prizes?
No. We did better than we've ever done, though, I tell you that. Mr. Gilberto was there with some of his friends or buddies, I guess.
And brother-in-law, and good friend from high school college.
I just have one complaint. Can we find an October 1st Sunday that we have a little better weather than we've had the past few years? I don't mind it being cool, but, you know, although it really didn't rain, it just was damp and a little mist in the air.
First hour or so.
Yeah.
It's a little damp.
So, with that-
It affected your play, huh?
It definitely affected mine.
Really affected your play? The weather affected your play?
No. Nothing would affect my play, Steve. It doesn't matter. No, actually, we were doing pretty good. My daughter was doing a great job, so. I can't say I was.
Yeah.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. O'Leary. You all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any animus? Thank you, everybody.